The game so cold, but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. The game so cold, but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Down they gram, made it straight to the block. Pirates this water, water is hot. Listen up and up, turn that little to a lot. Right hand on the cell phone, taking orders. Left hand three sixes loaded to the lot. Blue heart and tips, gas switches on the lot. State gang, two stippers can't be stopped. Laughing at you haters, why I'm stumbling through the paper? Says long let your bottom, won't you meet me at your top? That nigga ain't shit, he ain't get that a lot. Won't be deterred and I won't be stopped. Shaq Diesel, number one, I post up on the block. Twenty-four seven, cuz the hustle don't stop. Thirty-one flavor, take an order like a waiter. I be selling more gas than a local truck stop. Twelve hundred strong, four pounds of desire. Got me shining, I'm a star. Ask about me, I am legend. They gonna tell you who we are. Fuck these niggas, fuck these bitches. Get money, all I know, no love for these bitches. Never saving these hoes. The game so cold, but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. The game so cold, but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. When I'm thinking bout the past, yeah, gone get some nights. Gang, we at the spot. If we ever was short, then it's back to the block. You probably get shot. Every day's a sudden change. We getting money, that's what thing is never gon' stop. Real dope boys do what it takes. Playing high stakes, living to die. Do your time, keep it quiet, no matter who you are, don't get what you got. Stack it up, that's the bundle, stay fresh. Oh, they think that you're not. Take you roll with a hoe, they gon' let you go. Somebody's gonna say you ain't hot. Just confess, think yourself, no worry about nobody else. It ain't no handout. If you say the same, put it on chain. Let them see you ain't tied down. Got a couple of rings, did a lot of things. I ain't really gon' talk about it. Give me a tray, get you some gold. She gon' show up and show out. So don't ask me what the dope at, cuz you already around. The game so cold, but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. The game so cold, but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nigga came up in the trap. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night.
Morning ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Hopefully y'all can hear me. This here meeting here, this particularly here meeting, it was, it was like Dalton in Memphis. I was at boys and at the end of that, I salute that woman cuz she sat up there the whole time, just to salad, knowing she was finna get fat. And then the whole fucked up part about it is her replacement is the guy who she brought in. It was like second up under her, but he told him folk, when he got elected, don't play with me. They would, the folks in the crowd were talking. Bruce said, "Don't play with me." I'm telling you, don't play with me, I'm a real nigga. He gon' fit right in, he is. But this is a morning here. It's a long meeting, so that's why I only play one song. I'm gonna have it on double speed, but yeah, this was, this what happened in my city a couple of days ago. We got our own issues too.
Good evening, yes ma'am, madam chair.
I don't know, we buffering, hold on, don't stop. Let me put the quieter down one forty-four if you gon' buffer.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Let's see, maybe it'll act right.
The question is now on the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments superintendent?
Good evening, yes ma'am, madam chair, there are a few amendments to tonight's agenda.
I just wanna point out the abundance of real sheriff deputies and shit at our meetings. We on play, there are police everywhere in that motherfucker. I don't know what throwing township doing with the fat ass security guard they get. It ain't happening, nope.
First, we'd like to add items twelve point one, which is project lead the way grant acceptance. And item twelve point.
Morning, Brooks.
Which is a donation from the Smith Foundation for Cordova High School. We will remove item point two-two for further review. That's the Frazier Corning Elementary. Item and item eleven point three-six, which was City University denial application. Madam Chair, we'd also like to add a non-business item to the agenda for discussion. It doesn't require board action and that's just the presentation of the financial report.
There's a lot of boring shit, I should've skipped to the public comment. I thought public comment was coming straight in.
Any other amendments to the agenda?
Kyle Rowe.
Is there a motion for approval of the agenda? And say.
Second.
Hospital, he done broke this motherfucker down.
Commissioner Porter.
Aye.
All right. Commissioner O'Teague.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Commissioner, oh shit, we at home, Javah, this at home.
Thank you, the agenda is.
Problem. This Memphis problem. But they. Let me see if I can give y'all the recap of what happened.
Public comments shall be taken in the order in which the public comment cards are received. A sign up sheet for public comment will be provided.
Public comments.
At each applicant meeting and will be closed at the start of the meeting. This sign up sheet is located at the entryway table. Just pass the security checkpoint. Speakers must state their name and he or she is representing, if any, and subject of their comment before they are permitted to speak. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs that concern them. Speakers are asked to refrain from using names or personnel or names or persons connected with the school system, particularly when lodging a complaint.
Man, we read our rules and shit for our thing, so this is the timeline. December sixteenth, M C S, M S C S Board announces meeting to discuss contract. The next day, on December seventeenth, Board introduces allegations against Fagans. January thirteenth, County Commissioner approves vote of no confidence. January fourteenth, Board discusses alternative to firing Fagans. So they move really, really quick, back to back, both tasks. What allegations did they, I gotta see if I could find the allegations. I was too busy in Dalton.
Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make deflamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. The chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive and does not adhere to board rules. Dr. Schultz will announce the number of speakers and time allotted per speaker.
This evening, we have twenty-five speakers at one minute each.
Your time is projected.
One minute? Damn, I wanna move to Dalton, at least they get three.
It on the screen to your right and directly behind the board. When you hear a bell, your time has expired. The first three speakers tonight. Jay Worth, Cassiel Montez, and Latasha, I'm sorry. Grease, I do apologize if I said the last name wrong for Miss Latasha. No, hold on one second, the mic is.
We can't hear you nigga.
Can you hear me now?
Yes sir, yes sir, thank you.
My name is Jay Worth, I represent Gold Key Productions or G K P. I came here tonight on this last push.
Mr. Worth, I'm sorry, we'll let your time start back. Can you give your address please?
Okay, I'm sorry, three one six four Bayview Drive.
Tell them I wanna do this.
Right, I came here tonight more so that there isn't certain individuals on the board. So I'd rather use my minute to take this time to say, Dr. Fagans, thank you. Thank you for your integrity. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your tolerance. Thank you for your professionalism. Because what has happened now is your intelligence and your integrity has illuminated and irritated a lot of personal agendas up here. You hit the ground running. You care about our children. And unfortunately, there are a few people who have put on Stevie Wonder and Ray Charles glasses and turned a blind eye and a deaf ear to the things that you meant to do and the things that you are doing here. We salute you, regardless to what happens tonight. They won't be able to say that we didn't fight, even if we don't win the battle. And we stand with you, Dr. Fagans, thank you. Y'all ready?
Yes sir.
Cassiel Montez, I'm a community activist, a lot of y'all might know me.
I definitely know Cassiel, he be arguing with Thaddeus Matthews all the damn time. Then when the beef happened with Thaddeus and his wife, Cassiel was outfit and another stayed with his wife, definitely know him. Your shirt too little too sir, it's too little.
Y'all might not, but not y'all will. First off.
Say your address, Mr. Montez.
Five oh three North Fifth Street.
Fifth Street, he downtown, okay, North Memphis.
On this board that I'ma fall. First of all, you got individuals over the internet, tell me I kissed the cat, but you're a board member. You got individuals such as Miss Love, who has a child that was in trouble. We still in consolidation with you.
Miss Montez. Let me stop you.
No, bro, now let him cook.
I didn't know.
Let Cassiel cook. They got to say their name and get their address, damn it. He need to be able to address somebody on the board.
So y'all stop it at forty-three.
He want his seventeen seconds, motherfucker.
But as I was speaking, when it go back to forty-three, I could tell.
Hey man, hey, already we can see, Memphis is not doubting. They don't give a fuck, they like, hold it down, bruh, take my time back. I stand up here all motherfucking night, you stop me. Take it back to forty-three, I need my last seventeen seconds. We not going.
So as I was saying, we still in consolidation with certain individuals. When they was going through things in the community. This lady has came here in eight months, she's done.
Okay, here we go. And their ouster, M S C S Board members accuse Dr. Fagans of losing a three hundred thousand dollar state contract to help unhoused students. She sought out and accepted a donation of more than forty-five thousand dollars without the required board approval for any item over fifteen thousand dollars and misleading the board in public when she stated overtime pay of more than a million was paid to employees for time not worked. So that's why they voted to fire her, losing a three hundred dollar grant. She accepted a forty-five thousand dollar donation without board approval and misleading the board in public when she stated overtime pay of more than one million was paid to employees for time not worked. She said she gave out some free money and she didn't. That's why they wanted to fire her, alright. There's some, oh y'all, there's some rough Miffians in the crowd tonight, there's some rough Miffians.
Done more than anybody else who y'all spent numerous amounts of thousands of dollars with their superintendent. Let this lady do her job. It sound like it's personal, it's looking like it's personal, but I'm not a judgmental character person. So with that being said, I wanna see who gon' vote no. If y'all don't know what community activist stand for, when Cassiel Montez said, "I'ma pull up at your house, I'ma have two hundred people with me and we gon' protest your house. I'ma make it just as uncomfortable, just like y'all doing this lady for no apparent reason cuz the grounds that y'all having, y'all don't even have no grounds to stand on. And we gon' stand on business, I don't need no hold.
On business. So what does standing on business mean, she fired? She ain't gon', she ain't gon' get back, who what the hell you got on, woman?
Good evening, my name is Latasha Grease, my address is ten ninety-five Bama.
She in South Memphis.
My thing is, I watched one of you all's board members sit up there and give us a stellar performance on how one of you all's principal was, wanted to commit suicide. So I wanna know, who did that board member report that to? That's what I wanna know. And then I also wanna request that the feds come in and investigate this board.
Not the feds. Why you rocking though? Stop rocking baby, stop rocking. We so country.
Another board member to return and they makeup patches. Have nice.
Marcus Randolph, Charlie Nelson, Nor Nostrom.
Marcus Randolph, twenty-seven ninety-seven East Hickory Bluff. I think that we've done just about everything we can do peacefully. We went to, we come here to the school board.
Represent for us, bro. He the educated Memphis.
We've talked, a lot of y'all sort of, us activists here have stood with you, even in your trying tribulations. And we see that you won't even stand by us.
Uh huh.
You don't care about the children, this personal thing because we saw.
They need to watch this.
Understand that this is personal. This about our babies, I'm so tired of Memphis taking two steps forward and ten steps back. I can't even count how many times I've done it. Ain't no more talking, do what y'all gon' do evidently. You've already made your decision and seven of y'all need to be removed. And we will do so, the new ones, political suicide.
And they pretty much just said, the whole school board is getting changed next election. Y'all motherfuckers getting up out of there, shouting sweet. I don't like the fact that these comments is a minute though.
How you doing tonight? My name is Charlie Nelson, Churro twenty-eight, Cordova, thirty-eight. But I wanna get into that, you know my address. But yeah, I, I come here tonight.
Damn, hold up my nigga. Everybody gotta say their address, how you just gon' come up and say, well, I get it. He like, niggas ain't finna come shoot my shit up. But I get, how he just gon' say fuck, fuck the rules, y'all know my address, Google me.
How you doing tonight? My name is Charlie Nelson, Churro twenty-eight, Cordova, thirty-eight. But I wanna get into that, you know my address. But yeah, I, I come.
Damn, he gave a fake address.
A lawsuit because of discrimination, applied for plenty of jobs. I reached out to you superintendent, I call you, I email you, you said transparent. You had been there with me. I left the lawsuit at your office with your staff, nobody got back with me. So what I supposed, I was defending you with the new board member, older man, and you didn't do anything with the lawsuit. So you didn't try to help me and that, so I think, you know, we need a new superintendent that could come in and help everybody's job, not the people that.
Wait, so you mad that she ain't respond back personally to your lawsuit that you filed against whomever for discrimination? She's not supposed to respond to it sir, that's what she got lawyers for. That's what the legal team is for, he mad.
The lawsuit job, also help the people that trying to apply for jobs, teacher, to apply for jobs, not getting interviewed, including myself, and it's not right. And you know I reached out to you, I called.
Ain't no way in hell you is applying for a teacher's job nigga. Maybe a teacher's aide, but you is not applying for no teacher sir, stop the cap.
Your number four one six five five four four.
What the fuck?
So I'm not for you tonight. I think they need to vote for somebody else because I filed a federal lawsuit. You didn't try to meet me at all, say, Mr. Another sit down and talk, you didn't do nothing. So my thing, you let the board do what they.
Nigga, you know how many thousands of people file lawsuits against the Memphis and Shelby County school system daily, motherfucker? She can't talk to all you niggas? If you file a lawsuit, she ain't supposed to talk to you, it goes to the legal team. Nigga, you supposed to talk before you do a lawsuit, you supposed to try to have arbitration or have some type of common ground meeting before you file a lawsuit. Once you get the lawyers involved, that's who you gotta talk to.
You have a good day, accomplish.
They ghetto ass iPhone alarm they get going out, they so ghetto. Now it's taking place in the heart of Lord Memphis.
Sixty-two twenty-four Scroll Drive, I'm a Spanish teacher at M S C S. And what's happened is a profound tragedy. Less than a year ago, Dr. Fagans was hired to lead M S C S, one of the most struggling school districts, not only in our state.
Damn, she ain't, she ain't even get a full year on the job and they got rid of her? Jeez. But they can't say there wasn't turnaround cuz the guy that they voted for interim, they're touting the turnaround that he had at specific schools that he was tasked to get up to snuff, so that falls under her leadership. She picked the right person that was able to turn around those struggling schools.
About our country, and to the delight of many, she hit the ground running, cutting waste and demanding a level of excellence that this board clearly isn't used to. But you know what they say, that no good deed goes unpunished. Here we are, less than a year later, fighting to keep her as our leader. And what brought us to this point is frankly shameful. We all know who's behind this agenda, we know that the same PR firm that represents this.
This Marcus, I know his fat ass.
Dr. Joris Ray. And it's shameful to hear that the former board chair, who was voted out of office, is bragging about how she still has five votes on the board.
I hear it clearly, gay, you can tell by how you holding his phone. He Asian. I don't know if he Hispanic or Asian, he definitely gay though.
The community doesn't want this, please do the right thing and keep Dr. Fagans.
Spanish teacher got on.
Liz Maribel, Reverend Kenneth Waylon.
Janetta sound, Kenneth Waylon was there? Definitely know Janetta. She gotta be a teacher.
Dennis, I'm sorry, y'all ready? Okay, Dr. Dennis Stokes, sixty-two sixty-three, Poplar Avenue, Suite ten oh one, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one nine.
Doctor.
I stand before you as an educator and alongside other educators of Memphis Shelby County Schools who overwhelmingly voted yes for collaborative conferencing and yes for U E A T A N A to represent them at the table for collaborative conferencing to negotiate an M O U.
He's a person.
Working conditions, insurance benefits, bereavement days, and fringe benefits. It is with great concern that I bring to your attention the actions of a school board member and his wife who have actively obstructing and obstructing our dedicated teachers from negotiating their much-needed amended M O U slash their contract with the district. This is not, this not only undermines the teachers' rights to fair representation, but also jeopardizes the quality of education our children deserve. The U E A worked diligently to ensure teachers and teacher types had a voice at the table. The election process was done with transparency and integrity. U E A's leadership planned for this election two years because we knew the M O U was ending.
Let her cook, keep going, keep going, Dr. Stokes. Don't suck that up.
That the school board member does not interfere with the process for collaborative conferencing so that we can start training next week.
What you gonna do, cut the mic out? With your mean ass. Let her cook, y'all know a minute ain't, y'all low down his head. Y'all know a minute ain't good enough to say shit. By the time you get your damn address out, you only got forty-five seconds left. Y'all know what the fuck, yeah, this fucked up, we need to vote to get at least two minutes.
We read it, Miss Maribel, I'm sorry.
Is Miss Stokes back in line? She said, I'm waiting everybody to get quiet.
As president of the largest local, the United Education Association, it is important that we continue to bring to the forefront the real problems before us. I have heard nothing regarding collaborative conferencing.
Well, we know, but this ain't no damn lace front. She got the, she got the old school bangs. Let us just stop and marvel at this hairstyle for a minute. It's big, it's puffy, it's symmetrical, it really goes right with her face. It's a perfect square there. No lace fronts, no extensions, no ease control, there's none of that. It don't look good, but still, it don't look bad, it look like her. But that's, that's the hairstyles they, the white girls rocking in Memphis. I'm actually, overall, I am pleased by the general appearance of the, um, of the audience, they didn't embarrass us tonight. I don't see no booty shorts and shit of that nature, so shout out to the, cuz I guess these is parents, shout out to the concerned parents and pawpaws and stuff in the crowd.
We read it, Miss Maribel, I'm sorry.
They still talking, she said. She said, ain't nobody talking when I'm talking, so shut the fuck up. I ain't gon' say nothing. I know this fat ass nigga, I'm pretty sure this is Marcus, pretty sure it is.
Poplar Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one nine. As president of the largest local.
Is that, is that Krieger? Memphis said that, that meeting, that's him back there.
I have heard nothing regarding collaborative conferencing, where educators continue to have a voice in decisions that pertain to their salary, insurance, benefits, and working conditions.
Hell yeah, it's cold down there, that's why you seen that nigga who was talking about, he was soon had on his little furry hat. Yeah, it's cold, they, they inside their damn auditorium where they probably got the heat on hell.
We should be negotiating.
Them folk waiting in line an hour to get in this meeting.
Association did our part by garnering sixty-one percent of the overall teacher vote.
Hey, anytime your sheriff deputy got on a, got on a duty belt, cuz when you have a duty belt, you mind, you have on a regular belt, then you got on your duty belt, and then you got some fasteners on both to keep this shit from sliding, the duty belt stay with your regular belt. Anytime your sheriff deputy gotta keep pulling up his pants, he ain't gon' do shit. Like you, like we need some, when are they gon' implement? Well, I thought you had to take fitness testing, all of this shit, to be able to do this. This nigga ain't chasing after nobody, look at him. Even if something break out of court, what he gon' do? He didn't pull his pants up to hold me. To the left hand, left side of your screen with the body cam, watch him pull his pants up. He ain't even doing, he ain't even moving and he gotta keep pulling his pants up, bad sad. Y'all can get over when he, when he at work, y'all could get a couple of licks off. What he gon' do, he gon' be trying to pull his pants up.
We are asking that you stop the delay as the month of January is almost over. According to our M O U, we should be in collaborative conferencing now. We had a fair and equitable election and the teachers have spoken. President Napper and I were on all communication regarding this particular election and we agreed on everything. We are asking that you honor the results of the vote.
Go ahead, Becky, keep cooking.
Thank you. The superintendent has named the district team.
Man, I ain't never seen no hairstyle like this. He won't move. Her bob did not move with. And it's all real, Waylon, with your light skinned ass, come on, bruh.
That's called worship, Kenneth T. Waylon Jr., ten thousand.
So you wasted ten of your seconds to worship nigga? Nigga, you, you're a pastor, we know you worship, motherfucker. You probably led the prayer for this meeting started, why is you being extra, little suit ass nigga? But they ain't got the priest, the priest collar on.
Outside legal counsel and PR firms, is it us taxpayers?
Little pocket square ass nigga.
If it's an outside entity, why are they paying those fees, what strings are attached? Assuming the accusations you've made against the superintendent publicly are true, why haven't you taken progressive disciplinary, disciplinary actions against her publicly? My suggestion, give Dr. Fagans and our school administrators and educators three hundred and sixty-five days from graduation day twenty twenty-five as a baseline for graduation rates, dropout rates, and literacy rates. If they have not improved across the board by graduation day twenty twenty-six, then fire the superintendent and resign yourselves. Our public schools have been in a tailspin since the M C S charter was surrendered nearly fifteen years ago. Ironically, at least two of the people were.
See, I'm a product of Memphis city schools. I don't know what these people doing there, but yeah, we, when we, we had our own. At one point, Memphis had its own school system in Shelby County for all. And Shelby County for all the little suburbs had their own school system. But then a lot of shit started getting annexed and everything and they collaborated and these kids have lost their damn mind since then. I don't know what the Shelby County School System teaching these motherfuckers. But it's definitely not Memphis City School System standards. As you just heard, this pastor who been in Memphis his whole life just say, been in the tailspin for fifteen years. Now, I graduated in twenty twenty one. Not twenty twenty one, two thousand and one. He's going on twenty four years. He said fifteen. So that would put it about two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, when the school system went to hell. Yeah, because about in I wanna say, yeah, I guess about two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight, you know? No, it was about that time because my oldest son would have been maybe nine or ten. That's when I found out they wasn't they weren't doing cursive in school no more. I thought he was lying when he said he didn't know how to write in cursive because they wouldn't teach. And I'm like, boy, quit lying. And they really don't teach it. They do not teach cursive writing at all. If you want your kids to learn that that's something you have to pass down to them. Just like calligraphy.
Responsible for proposing the surrender of the charter are advising you sometimes in a paid capacity on what action you should take as a board. Why? I have sat where you are sitting, literally. I know what it feels like to be under that pressure. Don't give in. I have never met Dr. Fagin, but I have been the subject of a very public, very highly financed, very highly organized effort to assassinate my character and fire me at the same time. They failed and you will fail. God's will be done.
Ah, 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 nigga. She got fired at the end of that meeting. So I guess there was God's will and they didn't fail. Now, see, y'all got to stop throwing God and shit. And then when the result be the opposite of what you just said, you be sitting there looking crazy. Thank you. Hey, okay. Oh, that's that's Lydia Yates. It's the Lydia Yates Dance Academy. I recognize the jacket. She do a lot of stuff with the youth and she she was the one that set up nine oh one day and all of that good stuff. And Dr. Fagin was with her joking a couple of weeks ago. It's a P R stud showing that the kids is with her. But no, the this superintendent, even though she went on the job a year, she had a lot of support. The students were walking out of class and shit in support of them.
Judy Brown. Ms. McGee.
Shut up, lady. What does this nigga sign say?
Good evening. I am Judy Jack. Good evening. I am Judy Jackson Brown, five, six, seven, two, Tulip Hill Drive. And I am a retired teacher of thirty one years and a substitute teacher now. Success takes time. With the said allegations for a firing may seem right, but in the end, it's just gonna result in so many unforeseen problems for the district and especially for our students with their emotional health and their mental health. These children, it's like going through a divorce. They love and respect Dr. Fagin's. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. It takes patience, commitment, compromise, and mutual respect and time. When you're in a committed marriage, you don't just divorce, divorce because you had a disagreement, now do you? No, you stand to the side, you work it out.
Okay then, Judy.
Come to an agreement. And then you're one year marriage is now thirty years. We're just asking as citizens that you would give it time like you do in your relationships, your success relationships. Go with Garcia's compromise of resolution because success takes time.
We at least need a minute and thirty seconds. I can't tell if this big dude is if he agreeing with what's going on or if he stretching. Because he just doing a lot of head movements and shit.
Hello, hello, everyone.
Are they speaking together?
My name is Kia. My name is McGee. I'm an advocate. I'm from Memphis. My address is one ninety.
She be doing stuff for the um for the for the police department. She be signing.
Caldwell Avenue. I'm ready to start.
Now, you are ready to start it.
I realize why I'm here today. I see a lot of miseducation and you are destroying children who are deaf and unable to hear. You're trying to force deaf children to learn to lip read. They're not learning how to sign. And as a parent, I struggle with that. Dr. Fagin maybe doesn't realize that it's a waste of money. There's not enough support for deaf education, deaf culture. This is your chance. I believe in you, Dr. Fagin, that you will be successful in your role and your future. But I am asking that you please think about programs that will support the disabled and all who parents. There's a lot of lawsuits. There's a lot of suing things with insurance because I'm trying to get what my children need. Thank you.
I don't think there's a lot of people in general that know how to sign. So that that's gonna always be a problem if you don't have any people that are willing to come to the school system and teach because it's if you you could get more, you get these people are realizing in twenty twenty five, you can make more money in the private sector, like say going to like I said, this the the black lady. She works for the the police department. If I'm not mistaken, I've seen it. I don't know if she works for them or they contract her when they have press conferences. She stands up there and she signs for the people that are watching at home that may not be able to hear, but they'll see her. She get paid to do that. You get paid more money doing that than going to sit in the classroom and and speaking to a handful of children a day that do it because that we we don't. I don't know. I I from my experience in there, I'd never really saw any deaf kids my whole time going through our school. I don't recall my kids ever telling me they is a deaf person or something in their school. They exist, but it it's not a lot of them to where they would have a specialist on board to teach that. That's why the lady was her complaint was they teaching them how to read lips. And the people that are teaching him how to read lips probably don't know how to sign themselves. And that's the thing that this argument wouldn't be unique to this woman. I'm sure this is going on in every city everywhere. Where there's not anyone that can actually teach these kids how to sign. And most of the reason is they don't. They don't pay these teachers shit. They were paying them hundred thousand dollars. You would have like the best teachers in the world at these schools.
Mark Thomas McKenzie Ward, Representative Pearson.
I gotta find some interesting Javah. This this was, I think this this kind of made messing the news though because they've been talking about this shit for a minute. Well, yeah. Oh, they got a kid in there. But yeah, I I aim to do more more um of my city. If I talk about everybody else's shit, I got to at least show what's going on in my city, which I I try to do. I don't ignore it all the way. They got a little kid up there. Oh. Oh, no, they about they about to jack the niggas with our way do.
Why I'm here today. I see a lot of miseducation and you are destroying children who are deaf and unable to hear. You're trying to force deaf children to learn to lip read. They're not learning how to sign. And as a parent, I struggle with that. Dr. Fagin maybe doesn't realize that it's a waste of money. There's not enough support for deaf education, deaf culture.
We might have them, but you know, everybody can't afford that. If it's private, they can't afford it.
Your role and your future. But I am asking that you please think about programs that will support the disabled and all who parents. There's a lot of lawsuits. There's a lot of.
One thing I I would say because I had the opportunity to attend paid for schools as well as the public school system. Now, during my time, the only difference that I saw between the two was the one I paid for, we had to wear uniforms. And we took religion class. After the school I went to and graduated from, it was a public school. We just didn't have uniforms in religion, but the education standards and the teachers and the quality of education was the same to me. It's just more people. But I noticed most people that pay for their child's education, they don't have the complaints that all these other free education options provide. When when have you heard? Have you ever heard these parents who send their kids to private schools, the Catholic schools, be complaining saying the education sucks, the teacher sucks, my child ain't learning? It just doesn't happen. And um that may be the answer for a lot of us is you you may have to pay for your child's education. And then there comes the how we gonna do it? I don't know, but if you don't like the option that you're giving, you find a way. Just like parents all throughout the years found a way to do it. They worked two and three jobs and said, some parents suck dick to pay tuition. Who knows what these people had to do? Some cleaned up for the the we we don't know, but they made it happen. They made it happen.
Suing things with insurance because I'm trying to get what my children need. Thank you.
Mark Thomas McKenzie Ward, Representative Pearson.
They got badges up in their thing. And she done brought the first grade class with her. That's the principal and vice principal. How they had it? You better not make that baby say his address. They done put Casio up out there, motherfucker. Oh shit. Oh shit. Oh, oh shit. Oh, oh, oh. We got action in front of the kids. Come on, Casio. Ooh, he standing on business. He standing on business.
Mark Thomas McKenzie Ward, Representative Pearson.
Now, now, Casio, this Casio right there, what happens? Now he start getting loud. Don't touch me. Uh-oh, I'm gonna give you the business. He really didn't do nothing though. He was sitting there quiet as a motherfucker. He was. He said his piece about who house he were going to the protest. He got his one minute. He sat down. I'm I'm with Casio. I'm with you. You ain't even do shit. I'm with the woman. Say, what he do? He said, what I always do. Stayed on business. They were just sitting there drinking his bottle of water. He wasn't calling out or nothing. They single him. Sue him, Casio. Sue him. He got that blicky. Y'all were mad when I came through the front door. Why they put Casio out though? Free Casio.
I do apologize for the disruption.
Y'all fucked with him first.
Hold on. That mic right. Yeah, that's the mic. Thank you.
My name is Mark Thomas. My address is Austin P Highway.
Austin P Highway. He lied. It ain't even no school on Austin P Highway.
My name is Mark Thomas and I'm a proud third grader at G T W. I'm here to share why it's so important for you to approve the renewal recommendation for our school. Martin Luther King Junior once said, quote, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically." At G T W Charter School, this is exactly what our teachers do for us every day. At G T W, we're taught how to think deeply and solve problems. Our teachers inspire us to believe in ourselves and to try our very best and to know that failure is not an option. They remind us that skills that we learned today, especially reading.
Come on, read then, little boy. Read then, Mark.
Please approve the renewal recommendation for Granville T. Woods Academy of Innovation Charter School so that students like me and the ones who.
Oh, they came up there self promoting. Mark, I was you, Mark, you was. Y'all old people ain't shit, sir and ma'am. Y'all ain't shit for having that baby. Read your motherfucking agenda. Y'all could have read that shit yourself. I'm glad y'all this did display. Little boy can read his ass off. That's an adult speech and he's reading it. He's in the third grade. He ain't stumbling, fucking up or nothing. And y'all grown asses wrote that. But y'all should be ashamed of y'allself for trying to throw y'all school out there in front of the news media to to get some grants renewed. Y'all ain't shit. Big purple ass sweaters. Who fuck y'all think y'all is? The Qs?
Continue to grow, learn, and lead. Thank you for listening and supporting the future of leaders of tomorrow.
My name is McKenzie Ward. My address is Austin P Highway.
It is. I don't think there's a fucking. There might be a school on Austin. Let me see. Let me scan through my. No, there's no fucking school on Austin P. I'm using a um. Did they turn that old Cecil's into a school? I'm thinking, no, I don't see. There's Jackson Elementary. But that's on Jackson. It's not. I don't know. They just definitely the adults wrote the look at him smiling. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Austin P. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh huh.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is McKenzie Ward and I'm a proud third grader at G T W Charter School. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak about why it's so important to renew our school's charter.
Ain't Jaheem looking ass nigga.
Teachers inspire us every day to do our best.
Boy got the fresh line.
That failure is not an option. They tell us that the skills we're learning now, like reading and understanding what we read, are the foundation for our future. As a third grader, I know how important it is.
Two third graders reading their ass off.
A leader and I intend to be a leader one day. Please approve the renewal recommendation for G T W Charter School so more students like me can keep learning, growing, and preparing to become the leaders of.
I don't like y'all self promotion, but I must say, y'all did do a good job of staying. Look at what our third graders are able to read and say in front of y'all. This is what we teaching at our school. I appreciate that. I just don't appreciate the the shameless plug. Y'all should have did that. But y'all stunned it though. It worked. Y'all kind of warned me over even though y'all used them kids, but I get it. Y'all use them to prove that y'all is teaching over where y'all live.
Tomorrow. Thank you for listening and supporting our school and our future.
What the name was again? Glenville Academy. I go to Bob. I be don't move. Who is this nigga? Wait, who is this? Wait, who is this Renaissance man? This nigga come out here looking like Afro Thunder. Who in the what in the hell Julius Urban looking ass nigga? This man came out looking like a movie character. What the fuck? Okay, I gotta go back. I gotta go back.
The renewal recommendation for G T W Charter School so more students like me can keep learning, growing, and preparing to become the leaders of tomorrow. Thank you for listening and supporting our school and our future.
I'm seeing his iPhone alone going off. Skin ass nigga. Dino Mike.
I'm Tennessee State Representative Justin J. Pearson. Forty South Forest Street, three, one oh three. Look, um, I'm here because I am supporting a hundred thousand kids. I'm here because I'm supporting the future of our district. I'm ensuring that young kids who grow up wanting to be a superintendent and do things in our school district might see somebody like themselves who's educated, who's well-prepared, who's well-equipped, and be treated with respect and dignity. And that has not happened here. This has been an unfair and an immoral process. I lost my job to something similar to this, a kangaroo court of people who had personal agendas but did not have a true plan or proposal that they wanted to put forward in front of the public. This is wrong. You might think that your reasons are right or self-righteous, but this is wrong. Because this ain't how you do things. And this ain't how you treat people. And we all know better. More allegations come every meeting. More new information comes every meeting. This is not how you govern. And when you operate in this way, it leads to other people in other positions of power like state legislators to do things to strip away the power of our community.
He the state representative. Let him cook.
And the way that you have went about doing this to this woman who is leading this district, has done nothing but send a signal that we don't know how to self-govern.
I mean, he the first nigga to say fuck your time limit and they let him get away with it because he a state representative. Good morning, Truth. I don't want to get away with it because he a state representative. I know, I was talking to the, to the peoples. Oh, hey Candy. Yeah, this, this, he the first nigga to say fuck y'all time limit. I'mma say what I wanna say. Let's see how long he get to go over his beep. Oh no.
The positions of power like state legislators to do things to strip away the power of our community. Your actions have repercussions.
He finna get two minutes.
About doing this to this woman who is leading this district has done nothing but send a
Ain't that, ain't that nigga said, your time is up, sir? They ain't said shit to him.
Signal that we don't know how to self-govern.
Thank you.
I fought alongside a lot of these people
There she go.
To multi-billion dollar corporations, I think, Chairwoman, to stop a billion dollar corporation from building a pipeline through this community. And do you know the two people that they hired? Ms. Deidre Malone and Robert Spence.
Thank you.
The same people that this board has hired
Oh.
Unjust in action. I'm almost done.
Thank you.
Oh, my nigga said, I'm almost done. Fuck your time limit, a minute ain't enough. One of the other residents gave me their time. This nigga is cooking. Representative Pearson, I might vote for you next time. I'm, I'm lying, I don't do it, but you, I work on your campaign. How about this? I might not vote for you, but I work on your campaign. I put a sign in the yard or something. I like you. You're a rebel.
Land on her heels somewhere in a district that respects her and that sees the value of what she has done. But we will face the repercussions of the unjust actions. But somebody wrote, truth crushed to earth will rise again.
Thank you.
And you all need to know that this community will continue to rise.
Now what you gonna do? Take the microphone from him, nigga? Push him. Please push him.
And send up.
Ooh, oh shit. Oh shit. Memphis, stand up. Oh shit, this nigga snatched, he snatched the mic. Look at this. Look, 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 look at the stare there. I think Afro Thunder could take Rock. Y'all know there's Rock from the TV show, right? There's Rock. Versus Julius Ervin, Afro Thunder. Oh shit, Afro Thunder snatched the mic. He said, hold up, nigga.
On her heels somewhere in a district that respects her and
Hold on, let me slow this shit down. I gotta put this in normal speed for this matter. He tried, he, he like, hold up, nigga. Oh shit.
That sees the value of what she has done. But we will face the repercussions of unjust actions. But somebody wrote, truth crushed to earth will rise again.
Thank you.
And you all need to know that this community will continue to rise and stand up.
What, nigga?
Thank you.
He said like, nigga, hold up. Like, he like, bruh, I'mma leave. He ain't got to snatch no mic from me.
I got you, I got you, I got you. I got you. Listen, this is not some authoritarian dictatorship. This is a democracy.
Here we go.
The su, the chairwoman has already told me that I'm over time. Y'all are not the unstoppable. So, look, I got it. This ain't my first time being here. But step back. I need, I really do need you officers to step back. This is a democracy.
Step back so he can step away from the mic.
Ain't about to kill nobody, ain't about to do none of that. Don't treat me like that.
And they, they finally, the chairwoman, these guys, some sisters said, this, can y'all get up off this nigga? He is a state representative. Was elected to that position by some people.
Treat none of these people like this.
Representative Pearson.
Go ahead, step back, Auntie. Step back. I'll put the mic down so somebody else can
Step back, Auntie.
Y'all go ahead, step back. Ain't, ain't no threat to nobody, ain't hit nobody, ain't said nothing like that. This is a democracy, whether people want to act like it or not. So don't treat anybody, including me, this way.
Thank you.
When you step back, I step away. They got hostage negotiations.
And thank you Superintendent Dr. Fagans.
She scared. She know Memphis crazy. She like, these niggas is crazy.
Pastor T.R. Martin, Cheryl Cright.
Not another pastor. Truth, I'm walking off. I can hear you, but I ain't gonna be able to respond because I'm walking off.
Carmen Flynn. Pastor T.R. Martin.
Well, I want to make sure I'm heard. Let me start off by saying, I looked up the name Michelle, and it means kind like God. I looked up the name Fagan, and it meant ardent one. Mean enthusiastic, passionate. What got me up to come here was when I saw those children dancing with her. The passion that she had with the children. Is this about the children or our personal agenda? Our children looked at her with hope, something I never saw our superintendent when I was in school. I can't even tell you his or her name. I can't even tell you where they were from. But if it took the board two years to get it right, and you telling me now you got it wrong? So that means you incompetent.
Good evening. Cheryl Piggy Cright, eight fifty-six Jackson Avenue, District One. Thank you for offering yourself for public service. I do understand that this is a tedious job, and I thank you for stepping up. However, it appears that the work you represent is not reflective of the work that we hired you to do. Your decisions are to be reflected of the public that you serve. If you are not communicating with the public, us, about your decisions, then you are making decisions on your behalf. We do realize that some decisions will not be favorable. However, even the teeth and tongue fall out. We, the public, is spending an enormous amount of our necessary money, our money, for a superintendent for our school system, and yet Johnny still can't read.
Good evening, Board. I apologize, there was holding me up outside. I could not get in. My name is Carmen Flynn. I live at sixty-nine thirty-nine Blue Sky Cove, Memphis one, three eight one three three. As a community member, a former educator, a former business owner in the community, I am here to say I support Dr. Fagans. But with that being said, I want us all to reflect that she is human, just like we are. We all make mistakes. Is Dr. Fagans perfect? Absolutely not. But I think we should consider the positive that she has done in uniting this community. Not only the students, the teachers, but even across racial lines. I'm born and bred Memphis. This is a long time coming for the nine oh one. I, I, I ask that, that, that we look at it in light of her accomplishments of Hello Neighbor, involving the students through legacy learners. From what I'm understanding from various schools, in attendance has been on the increase because of come and win. So I'm here to say, give her the same grace that you would want.
Mary Webb. Erin Idrovo. Mary Webb, Mallory Heights, the area that I represent. Address one sixty, South Hollywood. I am a retired sergeant MPD. I did thirty-two years of service. Came over here. I am one of the school resource officers.
She's dying. She's dying. She's dying.
I've been in some of the schools which she came through. And she talked the whole day without breaking, going outside with the kids, interacting with the kids, having lunch with the kids, doing everything. When I walk in my neighborhood and I see a, a child that usually don't speak to an officer, but turn around and want to know how his superintendent is doing, what's gonna happen? And I tell him, and I tell the rest of them, pray, like your grandmother told you, like your mother told you, this is our superintendent. You are wonderful. Ms. Wonder Habbert.
Um, hate to be that guy and, and just point out, I'm sure everybody in that room, except for the few people that spoke against her, was praying that she kept her job and she got fired.
I have a question.
I mean, hold on, y'all. I, I hit the wrong button. Hold on, y'all. Go ahead, Truth. Stop screen sharing, no accident. What, what's your question?
I hate that hair, but that man that just spoke before her, did he have Afro?
He did. Afro Thunder? Yeah, yeah, yeah. State Representative Pearson, whatever the fuck his name, he took that motherfucker down.
I was just, I wonder, I, I just Damn.
Yeah, he had Afro. In a custom suit. He taking it back to the seventies on you niggas.
Mm-hmm, he looked like it too.
Definitely a butcher. She, she liking, we already established this nigga her gay, by how he was holding his phone early. Green shirt, he gay.
His superintendent is doing, what's gonna happen? And I tell him, and I tell the rest of them, pray, like your grandmother told you, like your mother told you, this is our superintendent. You are wonderful. Ms. Wonder Habbert.
How they security our guard? Out of Jaffa, bad cook Jaffa turkey. She wore the pants in her relationship. What the fuck?
I live fourteen fifty-one Woodston Road, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one seven, and my name is Erin Idrovo. But my students knew me as Ms. Wendell. Students in my ninth grade English class knew that they had to have reasoning, logic, and evidence behind the arguments they made. Students in my classes were more composed and wrote more cohesive arguments than the disparate ones that some board members
Oh shit, cook. Cook, Becky.
The teachers I supported as a school administrator and now support as a nonprofit district partner know that in order to achieve student outcomes, you must first recruit, develop, and retain excellent teachers and leaders. Dr. Fagans was selected to lead this district after a rigorous interview process with overwhelming student, teacher, and community support. In her short time as superintendent, she has been resolute in making bold choices with student achievement and teachers at the forefront. The community stands behind her and we are asking you to substitute your initial resolution with Board Member Hewitt Garcia's substitute resolution, which calls for proactive repair on the side of the board and the superintendent to regain focus
She needs to teach her school.
Of educating students instead of infighting. Please retain Dr. Fagans.
She went to the private sector. There's more money in the private sector to be a tutor.
Kevin Durham.
Do I have to introduce myself? I haven't been able to watch these.
Yes, ma'am. Say your name and your address, please. And the clock will start after you finish saying that.
Great. Ashley Bettis, eight six four North Graham Street. Ms. McKinney said something that resonated with me last week. While describing why she supports the immediate termination of Dr. Fagans, she said in critique of Dr. Fagans, this reactive approach raises serious questions about the superintendent's commitment to data-driven decision-making. I too believe leaders should avoid overly reactive approaches, approaches that are not data-driven.
But the board was overreacting.
I made a survey and collected data from teachers,
She gone, Javah. It's over.
Community members, most of whom
The only thing
It may not represent
The only thing they're figuring out with Dr. Fagans now is if she was fired with or without cause. If she was fired with cause, they don't have to pay her her four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar salary. If she was fired without cause, they gotta give it to her. So they're, they're trying their best to say they fired her with cause so they won't have to pay her. And they, they said they did an independent report and they're going to post those findings in the near future. I guess I do a phone, phone do a show, I do an upload about it. But she gone.
Standard of scientific polling, but it does represent almost three hundred respondents, of which over one hundred schoolteachers, most of them in District Two, who are willing to put, uh, who are willing to put their name
Doing this, I'm a day behind, so this happened Wednesday, I believe.
Um, do you believe Dr. Fagans should be fired was one of the questions, and do you trust Board Member McKinney was the other question?
Yep, happening on the twenty-first. I'm three days behind.
And Dr. Fagans should not be fired.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm three days behind on this. So this happened Tuesday when schools opened back up.
Austin Bettis, eight six four North Graham. Of the two hundred eighty-two respondents, oh, uh, two hundred and eighty said no, Dr. Fagans should not be fired.
Mr. Bettis, you cannot call people's names, okay? Okay? Say superintendent, you can't call the names.
Oh, excuse me. Um, of the two hundred eighty respondents, two hundred and eighty said no, the superintendent should not be fired. Only five percent said they trusted Board Member, um, McKinney.
You can't say her name.
Damn.
We have many added additional thoughts with written comments. Some of those comments will be read tonight if there's time. We asked earnestly if you would consider the thought that a vote to immediately terminate the superintendent might be actually an example of a hasty decision not supported or driven by data. I'd ask, I'd also like you to ask, uh, if you would like a copy of this data. Expected that. Any over here on the rest side?
You can bring it and give it right here to this, to her. She'll get it to us, to Ms. Timberlake. You can bring it, Ms. Bettis, and give it to, to her right here. You can bring it, Ms. Bettis, and give it to, to her right here.
May I finish this last five seconds since it was interrupted a couple times?
You can do your five second.
Thank you. Um, one more quote that we agree with, uh, from one board member is, "As elected school board of, uh, members, we carry a heightened responsibility to our students, parents, teachers, school leaders, staff, superintendent, and the larger community." We ask that you consider, uh, your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham. Kevin Durham. If he's in overflow. Julia Horowitz.
I'm Julia Horowitz at eighteen forty-three Hunter sill Drive. I came tonight to ask that we please keep Dr. Fagin's. We need her. Memphis needs her. The students need her. I know it's hard to listen. I often have trouble listening too when I'm trying to make a point. I recommend we bring in a communications expert to remind us all how to listen. And I recommend we postpone big decisions like this until that has happened. I know the students go to school every day and they listen every single day. I think we can too. Thank, thank you.
Her voice sucks.
Mike Michael Pleasance.
Hi, um, my name's Mike Pleasance. Uh, I live at seven six seven Hawthorne Streets and I'm a teacher at Manassas High School. Um, I came down here for the December seventeenth meeting and I was confused at, uh, just trying to figure out what was going on with the complaint against Dr. Fagin's. I, uh, just heard a lot of things that sounded like things I've heard every year. Like every superintendent has had those kind of problems. But it was really coming though.
Can't say names. This is bullshit that you can't say names.
That's okay.
Exactly what they supposed to speak.
Uh, the head of social studies has not been replaced yet. I've taught social studies my whole career and, uh, we always get last pick. You know, we always have to wait. I, I don't even know what a new head would do because he's not gonna get any budget. And I, I just don't understand, like, like it doesn't seem like the information that is coming.
His time finna be up.
Actually happening. But, and just where I can speak, where I know, I, I don't understand, like, why these complaints are only coming with one set of contexts? And I, I hope that we're gonna listen to the context of all the people who keep coming here to try and offer. Thank you.
Kevin Durham, come in.
Hey, I'm Kevin Durham, two ninety-one West Levee Road, Mississippi, Tennessee, three eight one on that. Uh, I just came to see, come to say, I never been in one of these rooms and nothing like that, but I'm, I'm, I'm hun- one hundred percent a fully supporter of Dr. Fagin. She's done a great job. It's been eight months. Uh, as I hear, the kids been doing good, the teachers, they, they, the teachers and the principal got raises. Uh, she just trying to get all the corrupters out, that's all. So there been a lot of it in the past years.
Who is this country woodchuck looking ass nigga?
Support Dr. Fagin. Go Dr. Fagin.
I thought he couldn't say names. He had to say superintendent.
Notoria Carpenter.
Notoria Carpenter, sixteen thirty-seven Britton Street. I have two questions. I wanna know who paying the PR firm, the Deidre Malone, Connor Malone group? And I wanna know who paying outside counsel? Since the co- if, if it's under seventy-five thousand dollars, y'all don't have to bring it before the board, but I think the community need to know who paying this money. Cause if it, if y'all, we, the taxpayers paying, we need to know the amount.
Thank you. The question. Good, the question is now on the approval of the minutes from the following meetings. Approval of the minutes of the December third, twenty twenty-four business meeting. Approval of the minutes from the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four work session. Approval of the minutes of the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four special call meeting. Are there any corrections? There being no connection, corrections, do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion.
Second. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner McKissick.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Porter.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Love.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Otain.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams. Board Chair Coleman.
Aye.
We have nine in the affirmative. Thank you. The minutes are, as listed, are approved. We are now on to committee reports. Eight point one, the board chair's report. Again, we would like to celebrate our very own Rashawn Drinkens, who celebrated his thirtieth birthday on January the thirteenth. Happy birthday, Rashawn. We would like to wish the one and only Commissioner Sable Otay a very happy birthday this Thursday.
What kind of ghetto shit is this? Fuck, let me, let me sit this, damn. Forget I had cut the speed on normal. Don't wanna hear this shit. Oh, I forgot through the magics of wait. I forgot through the magic of, of, of you, of the laptop, I can speed this shit up. Hold on. I don't know how, oh, it just does it five seconds. Why they showing the local comedian gives back? We can't hear that shit.
Legislative Board Committee, and I had the opportunity to meet with Chair Mark White of the House Education Committee to discuss critical pathways to provide our education system for, to move our education system forward. During our discussion, we focused on what Representative White identified as some of the district's most urgent educational priorities, including but not limited to reading and math proficiency, teacher shortages, career and technical. Oh, I'm sorry. I do apologize. The coaches from Raleigh, Egypt are here with us. Let's come on in. I'm sorry.
Go Pharaohs. Son played football for Raleigh, Egypt. The fuck was said?
On, I'm gonna read this one again. On January eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Co-Chair Natalie McKinley of the Policy, Governors, and Legislative Board Committee, and I had the opportunity to meet with Chair Mark White of the House Education Committee to discuss critical pathways to move our education system forward. During our discussion, we focused on what Representative White identified as some of the district's most urgent educational priorities, but not, not limited to reading and math proficiency, teacher shortages, career and technical education, and workforce, workforce credentials, and facilities among other pressing concerns. It was clear that we share a common commitment to improving outcomes of our students and committees, communities. We emphasize the importance of building productive relationships, strong partnerships with the broad array of stakeholders. Representative White noticed as being deeply involved and ve- and investing in addressing these challenges and seizing opportunities to deliver a world-class education system. Moving forward, we look forward to continuing with these conversations with Representative White and other state leaders to identify actionable, sustainable solutions. Our aim remains to advance both academic and operational excellence that drives meaningful, measurable, and improvements in student achievement. Thank you. Eight point two, Academic Performance Committee meeting. There's no report tonight. Eight point three, Budget Audit and Finance Committee report.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanna share, uh, a few updates as we, as we get into budget season and share some of how we're getting, how I'm seeking feedback from colleagues and what we have coming ahead of us. Each of you have an updated budget calendar, um, in front of, printed in front of you. It is also on board docs under the committee report for the public who wants to view it as well. We may have a few changes, um, coming, but that it is very close to final. Uh, Co-Chair Porter and I are holding one-on-ones, uh, with, on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-seventh, uh, to hear ideas, um, or hear questions that we have in preparation for our February twenty-first budget retreat. Um, I've also asked, and we, we should have scheduled soon, a Budget One-O-One refresher. So, uh, particularly understanding where all of our revenues come from and all the implications, sort of the, uh, workshop that will be, uh, preceding that budget retreat. Um, some of the key dates that are coming up and they are within the calendar is that budget retreat. We'll get an update in early April about the budget. And then our county presentation is at the end of April. The board will see a final budget at the end of May with shortly after that presenting to the county again. Um, we will have some additional committee time scheduled, um, as policy requires, Budget Audit and Finance to, to meet and convene, so we are working to make sure that those are timed, uh, with the drafts and, and coincide with the calendar woman. Input would be optimal, so, thank you.
Thank you. Charter Schools Committee report.
Thank you, Chair. We have a meeting coming up on, uh, Thursday and it is listed publicly.
Thank you. Eight point five, Community Outreach and Engagement Committee report.
No report.
Eight point six, Evaluation Committee report. There is no report tonight. Eight point seven, Policy, Governors, and Legislative Committee report.
No report. But I would like the listening public to know, the Tennessee General Assembly convened, uh, Tuesday. The governor, uh, last week, the Governor Lee issued a special call meeting that a special call meeting. In this meeting, he addressed legislators will address, uh, vouchers, uh, disaster relief programs and illegal immigrants. Many of our immigrants' families know about what's to come.
Stephanie can't speak it all. The third grader's read better than her.
I am her and the board express our concerns. We would like for this measure to address the immigrant students we feel in our districts. Additionally, I would like for the district to work with community agents to address these concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner McKissick.
Thank you, Chair. As a legislative liaison as well through TSBA, I, I've been also meeting with legislators in Nashville and, uh, had a conversation with our education chair, Representative Mark White, just earlier today. And he asked me to share this with the board. Uh, Dear Memphis Shelby County School Board, and I'll read it in part. As Chair of the Tennessee General Assembly's House Education Committee, I would like to ask that you refrain from voting to terminate Dr. Marie Fagin's contract this evening. Like me, you have been elected to lead. You have a great opportunity tonight to show the community that you are listening to their concerns. He mentioned that he had, uh, had a meeting with the chair and he goes, "As we move forward, I ask that you focus on things that will truly help our students, such as raising proficiency in math and reading, making sure the science of reading, uh, is in every K three, K through three classroom, focusing on chronic absenteeism, CTE, and workforce credentials, uh, among other items." He says that "I am committed to supporting our community from the state level, but I need your support tonight to restore confidence in our citizens. Please work with Dr. Marie Fagin's and move our MSCS schools to new heights." Thank you.
Thank you. Eight point eight, Procurement Committee meeting. Uh, report, I'm sorry.
All the items are on the agenda.
Thank you. Eight point nine, General Counsel report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No report this evening.
Finance report.
Ms. Knight.
Good evening, board members, staff and the listening public. My name is Leslie Knight. I'm the interim business finance officer. And I will present the second quarter financial report ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. As of December thirty-first, overall, the district revenues increased by thirty point six million over the last fiscal year. The district recognized a three point one million dollar increase in local sources. This is primarily due to investment income, a one point seven million dollar decrease from Shelby County, which is related to property and sales tax, a thirty point seven million dollar increase from the state of Tennessee, which is due to, uh, Tennessee investment and student achievement funds, and one point five million decrease from federal sources, which is primarily related to indirect cost. Expenditures decreased nine point four million dollars over last fiscal year. Some of the most notable variances are professional services decreased by two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars due to timing of payments or invoices. Property maintenance services decreased by one point five million dollars due to the timing of, timing of internet and phone service payments in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Next slide. Thank you. Supplies and materials decreased by fifteen point three million due to the purchase of textbooks in prior fiscal year. Local travel decreased by sixty-six thousand due to staff reorganizations. Capital outlay increased five hundred seventy-seven thousand due to the purchase of security equipment and student computers for Fairleigh High School. Other charges increased nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand due to the rising cost of insurance. Other objects in debt increased three point three million due to payment of software renewal due to a realignment of resources. Charter schools increased by fourteen point six million due to the increase in test allocation allotted to the charter schools. That concludes my overview of the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four financial report.
Any questions, board members? We're now on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Fagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. We'll begin this evening with our normal monthly update and we'll start with our next level readiness metrics. And so as we think about data, uh, overall, we're pleased about where we are, uh, at mid-year, if you will. And so, uh, the first on the list is teacher vacancies. The percentage of teacher positions currently vacant has decreased has the overall number of teacher positions increased by three hundred and fourteen, meaning we have decreased our vacancies while still having to post more positions. Uh, the percentage of educators holding teaching permits and unlicensed or limited license has decreased by one point nine percentage points. Our current enrollment has increased by five hundred and nineteen overall, with the bulk of that coming out our charter schools with fourteen hundred and ninety-nine students. Our pre-K enrollment has increased by one hundred and seventy-four students for all schools, mostly at our non-charter schools by fifty-nine. Our absence rate, hello to our students. The student absence rate is one point one percentage points lower than the end of year twenty twenty-four for all schools. Chronic absenteeism, we're pleased with our work in this area as well. The percentage of currently enrolled students who are projected to be chronically absent is seven point one percentage points lower than the end of the year last year. So we look at current enrollment overall. Elementary enrollment was down by nine hundred and sixty-five. Charters saw an increase of five hundred and eighty students. At our absence rate, charters have decreased their absence rate by two percentage points. Non-charter absence rate for K five is down one point three percentage points. Our chronic absenteeism, this is projected, uh, is down eight point seven point, points for currently enrolled students compared to the end of year twenty-three, twenty-four. In six through eight, our current enrollment has increased by four hundred and forty-nine students. Our absence rate, our middle grade students have shown a decrease in absence rates with six point five percent of our middle schoolers not attending daily. That's down eight percent, uh, in comparison to the end of last year. Our chronic absenteeism, the percentage of currently enrolled students projected to be chronically absent is eight point five percentage points down from the end of the year last year as well. Our pre-ACT, now this is, uh, a new assessment for the district. Uh, the student's predicted composite is given to us as a range. And so the predicted ACT composite is the average of the bounds of this range and it created the variable predicted ACT composite. Off-track is anything less than a twenty-one score and then on-track is anything greater than a twenty, a score of twenty-one. And so our pre-ACT, which allows us to predict where students might perform in high school, it also allows us to provide greater resources and support necessary at an earlier age. And so grateful to the team for getting this implemented this year and placing us on track and more. And so grateful to the team for getting this implemented this year and placing us on track and more alignment with the ACT given. Eighty-six point seven percent of our non-charter eighth graders are off-track to score twenty-one on the ACT. This is a new assessment. It's based on predicted scores, and so you can see we have a lot of work to do. In grades nine through twelve, the current enrollment
Twenty-one out of thirty-two is is great. All you need is an eighteen for most approvals in in most colleges.
Rate remained at nine point six percent of students absent daily. This mirrors the end-of-year absence rate for high school the end of last year. Chronic absenteeism, twenty-nine point nine percent of currently enrolled students at all schools are projected to be chronically absent. This is down about three point six percent in comparison to last year. As we look at graduation on-track and off-track rate, we don't have that just yet. But as an estimate, seventeen point eight percent of non-charter ninth through eleventh graders are currently off-track for graduation. This is simply based on the number of credits that they've earned so far. This does not include semester one grades, which will be stored, which were just stored. Graduation on-track, off-track for grade twelve, twenty-nine point eight percent of our non-charter twelfth-grade students are off-track for graduation based on credits earned and ACT participation. Again, this does not include semester one just yet, as this data was pulled before our grades were stored. Pre-ACT eight-nine, grade nine, eighty-eight point three percent of grade nine students are off-track to score a twenty-one or higher on the ACT. Pre-ACT ten, eighty-six point seven percent of our grade ten students and non-charter schools are not on track to score a twenty-one or higher on the ACT. As promised to the board, we are operating under Destination Two Thousand and Twenty-Five. We're still tracking it and what was introduced as reimagining nine-on-one as the initiative in two thousand and twenty-one. And so that was the strategic plan adopted in two thousand and eighteen. This plan focused on ensuring students achieve academic and emotional success, and it had five priorities. Those five priorities you can see on the screen, and I'll share them as we give the update as we know it right now. So the third grade reading proficiency, the district has not achieved the goal of ninety percent of third graders being on grade level in reading.
Keep in mind, she talked about something they implemented in two thousand and eighteen, and she been on the job eight months.
The district was six point, six percentage points below the target of ninety percent. The district failed thirty-eight
You can take either one, but most people just want high school, high school graduation requirement is ACT.
Demonstrated proficiency on the TN ready assessments taken in two thousand and twenty-three, which is thirty-seven point two percentage points below the target. Fifty-nine point nine percent of school-aged children in Shelby County were enrolled in the district in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three, which fell short of the goal by nine point one percentage points. In two thousand and twenty-one, the last year of available data, eighty-seven percent of surveyed staff and community agreed that the then superintendent and the central office were on track to improve student achievement. Under reimagining nine-on-one, building on the Destination Two Thousand and Twenty-Five strategic plan, this plan or initiative addressed educational gaps, enhanced community engagement, prepares students for a global future. Progress was driven by three cornerstones, and that's reimagining education, strengthening early K-two and continuing literacy three-twelve, recruit, retain, immerse, and entrench, and then relevant rigorous and equitable academics. The district achieved an eighty-three point four percent graduation rate of shared, outpacing the target by one point four percent. The two thousand and twenty-three cohort had thirty-six point six percent achieved ready graduate, ready graduate status. That's one point one percent points below the interim target. In two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-six point seven percent of grades three through fives demonstrated proficiency on the TCAP ELA assessment, falling short of the target by thirteen point three percentage points. Math proficiency rates were twenty-six point one percentage points below the two thousand and twenty-four target, with twenty-three point nine percent of three through five, grades three through five students achieving proficiency. Our facilities update, we continue to post this online under our project bill and provide this weekly to our board members. We're down. We had some well over nine thousand work orders, I believe, when we first started with this. We're just over about fifty-seven hundred. The team is still cleaning up the work orders, but certainly a lot of work is being done, and this is with the addition of several hundred as we shift and transition through seasons with our HVAC systems continuing to pose the greatest number of challenges for us. Wanted to provide an update on our real estate plan that we introduced December fourth. Overall, the sale of the former Knight Road and Lesser schools, we discussed it last week at boardwork session. The contracts are being developed, and the items will be on the February business meeting for vote. We fielded calls for interest in Florida Kansas Elementary. That's one call. One call for Hamilton Elementary, two calls for Magnolia Elementary with the one tour that was completed of the building, and then one call for the vacant land in the Pisgah area. Appraisals have been received for Northwest Prep at four million dollars and Wooddale Middle School, which is operated by the Achievement School District at three point one eight million. And we did add the former Bayer Building at thirty thirty Jackson to the available list to gauge interest in the property. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Damn, y'all just moved over, y'all just moved the board shit over there to the Bayer Building.
Make sure I'm reading this right. On next level readiness metrics, K through twelve, we have the current enrollment. And so for non-charter schools, which would be our traditional schools,
Boy, their ponytail is struggling.
We're down fifteen hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts around that?
In terms of the decline in enrollment?
Yes.
Not at our non-charter schools?
Yes.
So I mean, across the district, Mr. White, are we seeing anything specific? I know we look at this daily in terms of our trends and patterns. Anything you want to lift here?
Good evening, board members, superintendent. I'm not seeing anything specific. It's definitely something that needs a little more investigation as to why these enrollment trends are occurring.
Commissioner Porter?
Hey, Madam Superintendent. What at what grade do our students start preparing for the ACT in high, what in high schools?
ACT preparation, thank you for the question, Board Member Porter. ACT preparation is throughout, you know, just the trajectory of the educational experience. What we see in grade three can tell us a lot about how a student will perform in their middle grades, and certainly by eighth grade. We know the types of courses that they've taken, the type of exposure that they've taken in terms of rigor, but also the depth of learning. We can measure by the where a teacher lands in terms of of the curriculum and the scope and sequence and just how far they get into the materials. But certainly implementing this pre-ACT allows us to get a better handle on how our students will perform when they sit for the exam in in grade nine, ten, and eleven, eleven when it counts in terms of for the state.
So they are able to start preparing for the ACT in the next grade, like while they're at school?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, because just looking at these scores, I think on averaging in Memphis alone was sixteen percent and then move. But it is, it's quite disheartening that our children are not, not just ACT, but it seems like they're not being fully prepared for all the tests. And so I just want to really see this, since I'm just only focusing on ACT right now, how can we just really, you know, just hone in on those resources? Where's more ACT prep classes? And I know it's in the district, but it seems like it's not strong enough. It's just not working. So I'm just really trying to figure out what's the disconnect between the study term and them taking the test.
Yeah, so I appreciate the the deeper question. When we think about preparation for any exam, any type of prep is really reactive. It is not the proactive approach, right? And so we're really just drill and keel, for lack of better words. What what the best preparation is strong instruction, a quality curriculum. And so when the results, when the report from the curriculum audit comes, you'll see teachers and staff have lifted a lot of opportunities and gaps in terms of choosing a curriculum and sticking with it, one that is research-based and is supported, the time that is necessary to understand the curriculum, and then certainly the supplemental material materials that are necessary to support it. And so it also goes along with scheduling. We get more of our students able to take Algebra One in eighth grade and just really rolling back some of the opportunities and access to our advanced classes. That stands to to support a student better as well. And so it's really about scheduling, curriculum, preparation, more than prep, ACT prep classes that are taken, you know, in your high school years.
Okay, I'd definitely love to advocate for more resources for ACT prep, whether it's before school, after school.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Love?
Madam Superintendent, I have a question about ACT prep. A couple of years ago, I donated funds to a school in Nellis District for the ACT prep in middle school. You have some thoughts about that?
About results from that or rolling back?
ACT prep in middle schools instead of high schools.
Oh, absolutely. And certainly as a companion to our courses, the earlier you offer the access and the exposure, the better. It's it's equivalent to tutoring. So for any class that you have that offering, and certainly they taking a look at it just that way. To do it. I think that if it's not called ACT, it's certainly double blocking for our students. When they take a math class, just double blocking, allowing them additional time in those respective content areas.
I have another question. Attendance rates have went up. What do you give that to?
Well, would I attribute the attendance rates increasing? I think, you know, when we rolled out Come to Win, I shared that I believed that that would be one initiative that we'd be able to hang our hats on. That that was something that students could get excited about. I believe that we provided a clear on day twenty, day forty, if you're here, this is where you are in terms of being a champion and participant, being able to track and monitor that, getting our our partners involved with celebrating that as well throughout the year. I think that's what our students have shared that have encouraged them, and then they have forced their parents, if you will, to have them on time as well for those who are transported by their parents. But a general excitement about what it means to respectfully make school cool again and fall in love with the joy of learning.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hewitt Garcia, Commissioner McKinn, McKissick, I'm sorry, and then Commissioner McKinney.
Thank you. On the Destination Two Thousand and Twenty-Five chart, where it says the target, third grade reading proficiency ninety percent, in my, it feels different than what I'm looking at or
So these were not aligned. I think the TISA accountability metrics were just developed in two thousand and twenty-three. It was just last year or two thousand and twenty-three, Mr. White? I know they're just fresh.
Yes, Superintendent, the first school year for the TISA accountability metrics was two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. So these definitely predate, they they predate not only the TISA accountability, but TISA itself.
I know we talked about literacy investments and and what we, the foundational resource, and I don't, and looking at the current most aggressive literacy growth imaginable, ninety percent. I I didn't, I don't know that we have a path there. So I think as we worked to set our new strategic plan, thinking about what is ambitious and about what are the reasons we could invest and double down on, so literacy as the foundation, but if it's not ninety percent, that's not a indication of our belief in our children, but it is the the amount of resources we need are often multiple years of remediation and and support. So I I want that to be a big part of our ongoing budget conversations.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Madam Superintendent, I just want to speak to the community. Yes, we do need ACT prep, but if we really want to make a difference, because with test prep, it's just simply a matter of how to learn the tricks of taking a test, but you must start at pre-K. If you really want to see good scores on ACT test prep, it has to be pre-K through third grade. Having three sons who graduated from this district who also took advantage of test prep. It's certainly, if I had depended on just waiting till they were in tenth grade or ninth grade or eighth grade, goodness knows that it would not have materialized, and then going off to college, I don't think, because it's just, it's a slow drip. And so that's where this budget season, I'm going to be focusing on our, what we're putting into our our budget for that pre-K through third grade, how our county commissioners are going to partner with us, how I'm excited to say the city of Memphis, for the, you know, first time in a very long time, giving money to our budget to ensure that we are assisting these students. So I just want to clarify that for the listening audience, that test prep is ideal, but there's basically, it's just a the tricks of the test, and we have to focus on that pre-K through third grade. So that's where I'm going to focus on this budget season. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to get back to enrollment, because this looks like a much lower number than we've seen in previous meetings. So I'm looking at October, and I'm seeing the MCSK
Most places don't take the SAT anymore.
Year-to-date.
I ain't never heard of college, ask for your AC, SAT schools. Like most of it, like only the smart, smart people took the SAT back in the day, where everybody took the ACT, because it was the graduation requirement.
Even if I'm looking, I'm adding
SAT wasn't.
Charter schools, it's fifty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two, but in October, I had a hundred and something thousand here. Can can we get, can you help me with that? Or maybe it's something you all need to look at later, because I'm concerned we're going into budget. And I know for our twenty-four, twenty-five budget season, we had a projected enrollment, and our our money, our TISA funds are based off of our last year. So our TISA funds for this upcoming fiscal year will be based on this particular enrollment. So I'm just wondering, can somebody help me with the numbers? It looks like we've gone down.
Board Board Member McKinney and Superintendent and Board Members, I appreciate the question. I I don't have the data to which you're referring in front of me, but what I will say is January is typically an odd month. What you will typically see at the around the holidays is a lot of movement of students after that first semester and during the holidays. So that's one thing that I think whenever we report January data, we have to keep in in mind. But could you just repeat for me one more time, because I'm trying to visualize it in my head?
So I'm looking at a report that says MSCS K through twelve enrollment, and it's a hundred and something thousand. I don't know if you can say it very well, but it's a hundred and something thousand here. And then I'm looking at this report, say, January twenty twenty-five is fifty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two. So that's what I'm asking. That's a big gap to say that in, I think this is October, I can look at it. October, we were at a hundred thousand, and then we've lost fifty thousand. My math may be not method, but
Yeah, I I do think, and I apologize to the board, that that all schools row is perhaps incorrect, because that should be our one hundred percent total enrollment, and I apologize that that was not caught earlier. We're going to need to go back and look at that and
That made me very nervous.
Yes, I could see that now, and I am, I am so sorry about that, because I can understand why that would make you nervous.
Right, okay.
I believe we've got, you know, either a typo or just a transfer problem with some of the data. Or maybe, or maybe we're not looking at the right slide.
It's okay, Mr. White. It's okay. It's okay. The current enrollment, Board Member McKinney, while there may be an error on that slide, is one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and four students for all schools. Again, this is absent of of pre-K, and then non-charter schools is eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eleven, with our charter schools at nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three, coupled with our all our pre-K, that one oh five, three oh four, and that five thousand, eighty-nine, and that gets us to that one hundred and ten thousand plus. So we can own the error on the slide.
I'm sorry, Superintendent.
Mr. White, it's okay.
I'm so sorry, but these are by grade band, these slides. So if you look at this slide, that is the K twelve.
Okay.
And that other slide was one of the grade bands.
Yes, it should say.
So it says K twelve. That's where the error is, and I apologize.
This is K five, I believe.
I think that's right.
And this is six eight.
Yes, ma'am. It's the, it's the heading that's the problem. K five, and then the next was six eight.
All is well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
And she doing this, knowing her job on the line. She's being very professional.
But you have sixty, six point six percent of the students were proficient in math. What are you talking about? What what is that reference to? I don't know which math course they are taking in this way, but they don't take the same math course.
Which one, Board Member Williams? Thank you for the question.
Eleven, and you're talking about ELA, and then you're talking about math at the very top of that, and you're giving the percentages of people who passed the test. The subjects are different in high schools. They're not all taking the same math. They're not all taking the same language courses. So I don't know how you, how how those measures coming up. What are you measuring? And what texts are they using?
Are we specifically talking about?
Everything on page eleven at the top that says grade, it says proficiency rate, and this is the topic of the course, and it just gives the course by subject such as ELA, such as math. It doesn't define it anymore, define it than that, and it doesn't tell you which math. So I don't, I'm not sure that these numbers are
He's he's in the report, Mr. White.
I thought, I'm checking over here.
It's okay, Mr. Board Member Williams. I thought you were on the slide. I was just, give me one second.
Looks up, the very first thing says just science. It says appendix science, and it says grade three.
So you want to know specifically in high school for sure, which which science?
Which, yeah, what is the science they're taking? Which math are they taking? It's just all under ELA or math.
Okay, this is our end of course.
I don't know what they're measuring.
So what we, what we do when we report by sub, by subject area and not end-of-course test, Board Member Williams, is we combine the EOC test. So when we say mathematics for high school, that would be Algebra One, Algebra Two, geometry combined.
So how would you know that, looking at at this chart, which math it is?
I guess we would need to be a little more specific in our chart or maybe add a footnote or something, but that's the way the state also does it. So we just mirror the process of when you report high school mathematics, it includes the end-of-course assessments for math that are available for high school students.
How do we know then that the curriculum is, is they're measuring what they're teaching? What other things do you have in this curriculum to support passing the test? And do we have curriculums in all of these courses? Do they have proper information in books and so forth?
I want to make sure I understand your question, Board Member Williams. You want to know, based on how the data is reported, in terms of who is successful and who is not, how do we know that we have the actual curriculum that is aligned?
Yes, from the courses, because they're not all taking the same course.
That's correct, meaning Algebra One, geometry.
Well, these are not that specific. It just says EL, it says ELA, then it says math. It's all they have here is courses. It's math and ELA.
Yes, sir.
They don't say what they are, but they just, they do give a number indicating who's doing well in each grade band of the percentage of proficiency.
I think that's a fair lift. If you'd like to see it by a content area, is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir. I'll take care of that.
Thank you. Proposed nine point one, proposed policy, second reading? 5013, promotion and retention, 5023, family life education. 6047, school fees and debts, 6060 school day.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners and Superintendent. For second reading and approval tonight, we do bring six policies with proposed revisions to align to statutory and regulatory revisions. The policies are 5013, promotion and retention. 5016, limited English proficient. 5021, library services and collections. 5023, family life education.
And Commissioner McKinney, second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McKissick.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Porter.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Love.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Otte.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Board Chair Coleman.
Aye.
You have nine and a affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. We are now onto the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, as a reminder, we removed item 11.22, which was the Frazier Corning Elementary School Foundation repair. We removed item 11.36, which was the denial of corner City University.
Consent agenda items. 11.1 contractor approval AT&amp;T Emergency and Security Service in the amount of 624,664.80. 11.2 contract approval Renaissance Convention Center Event Rentals, MSCS Graduations 2025 in the amount of 208,42.80. 11.3 approval Science Textbook Selection Committee. 11.4 approval Caldwell Guthrie Library Core Collection in the amount of 109,469.35. 11.5 approval Snowden K-8 Knowledge Tree Furniture, 165,175.69. 11.6 approval Memphis Symphony Orchestra.
Shit, I had to snow.
800.
Green dogs.
11.7 contract renewal Mansfield Oil Company Water Field. Rated.
Yeah, skip to that.
Memphis Chevy County Schools and.
She's still going.
11.16 Cordova.
She's still going.
11.20.
Good grief.
Ford's Field Lighting Project.
Damn, lady.
1,213,900. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McKissick.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Porter.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Love.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Otte.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Board Chair Coleman.
Aye.
You have nine and a affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. We have three items and request for action. Project Lead the Way, Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item 12.1 is Project Lead the Way for Douglas K-8. The recommendation is for the board to approve the grant acceptance of $50,000 from Project Lead the Way. This is to help purchase equipment, supplies and cover the expenses incurred for the Project Lead the Way core training at Douglas K-8 Optional School. Year one will be $25,000 and year two is $25,000 for a total of $50,000. Again, this is to support STEM students at Douglas K-8 Optional School.
Motion in second place. Motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Hugh Garcia. Roll call vote.
Commissioner McKissick.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Porter.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Love. Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Otte.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Board Chair Coleman.
Aye.
You have nine and a affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. Next one is 12.2.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 12.2 is donation to, from the Smith Foundation for Cordova High School. The recommendation is that the board approve a one-time donation of $35,000 from the Smith Foundation. That's harbor freight tools for schools.
Get to her vote.
As a big supporter of the arts and then who doesn't love Hamilton, right?
We will make sure it's added. Thank you. So our total was 7,000, 74,616 dollars and we'll add 3,640 dollars to that and we'll have it reflected in our minutes. Is there a motion to approve this item in a second?
I move. Second.
Roll, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McKissick.
Aye.
They went out. They had a lot of stoppages they see. Hold on. Okay. We got something. I can just skip with the arrow instead of trying to move forward. Some of them back, not all of them.
Board members, staff, parents and community members, the purpose of the special call meeting is to discuss the potential termination of Superintendent Dr. Marie N. Fagin's contract with the Memphis Chevy County Schools Board of Education. If the board decides to terminate Dr. Fagin's contract, we will appoint an interim superintendent. This step is necessary to ensure continuity in the operations of the school district. Thank you for joining this special call meeting today. You have already heard my explanation for this resolution as well as the response from Superintendent Fagin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. We are now on to public comments. In accordance with state statute, the board shall reserve a period for public comments during business and special call meetings. Only those members of the public who submit public comment cards to the board chairman prior to the commencement of this meeting shall be permitted to address the board. Public comments shall be taken in the order in which the public comment cards are received. A sign up sheet for public comments will be available 30 minutes prior to each applicable meeting and will be closed at the start of the meeting. This sign up.
They had a closed executive session.
Speakers must state their name, organization, he or she is representing.
More than yours truly.
Subject of their comment before they are permitted to speak. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs that concern them. Speakers are asked to refrain from using names of personnels or names of persons connected with the school system, particularly when large and a complaint. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make inflammatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. The chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive and does not adhere to board rules. Dr. Schultz will announce the number of speakers and the time allotted per speaker.
We have 27 speakers at one minute each.
Your time.
One minute again.
Behind the board. When you hear a bell, your time has expired. Liz, I've called the first three speakers, excuse me. Ms. Liz Marble, Austin Bettis, Ashley Bettis.
They signed up for both sessions, huh? Morning, Gabe.
Liz Marble, 6263 Poplar Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38119. As president of the largest local United Education Association, the members of the United Education Association of Shelby County are committed to making the 901 the best place in which to live, teach and learn. We remain focused on the goal of ensuring students have the resources they need, clean and safe school buildings, trained educators in their classrooms and well-rounded curricula that support the growth as future citizens. UEA also issued the Superintendent Leadership Survey where we asked the educators, over 6,000 strong, to answer two questions. The first question was, if the teachers wanted to retain Dr. Fagin, this superintendent, 88.3% of your educators said they want to retain Dr. Fagin. I don't need the rest of the speech. I don't need the rest of the speech. I've been in 121 schools. I dare say that all of you combined have been in that many. Teachers feel heard and seen. They want to retain Dr. Fagin's at 88.3%?
Thank you.
I don't know where you found the 11.7.
Austin Bettis, 864 Graham. This is not planned. I actually have some data as well. Mine's more homemade, but just want to reiterate that the data we collected about the respondents, ours was about 98% that said that they wanted to retain. This is a mix of community members, teachers, administrators, staff. I would like to read a comment if I have time, but first of all, if you'd like to participate in the survey, if you're streaming on YouTube, this QR code will go directly to that survey. And you can join, make your voice heard. I'm just going to hold that for a bit. If you're streaming on YouTube. And a few comments from our survey will be coming up next.
They streaming on YouTube. They get over his head with the iPhone going off in a minute. One minute, it ain't shit though. They know they wrong for this.
Ashley Bettis, 864. If you didn't see it, it was being covered. Please, please hear your voice. They should want to hear your voice. That is the responsibility as a board member to listen to their constituents. Please do it. Please share. One of our favorite comments came from a teacher from this survey that you have all the responses. I desperately wish a certain board member would consider the negative impact and immediate termination of Fagin's would have on our students and schools. As an MCS school teacher for almost the last decade, I have seen firsthand the negative impact of dramatic abrupt changes on schools. She has not even been serving as superintendent for a year. Nothing presented in the board meeting warrants an immediate termination. I was so excited to vote this certain board member in and another one out. I was practically skipping to the polls. Her behavior these last few weeks has been both an embarrassment and a devastation to me. Our students deserve consistency and someone to champion.
Thank you. I address Brittany Thornton, Christopher Schaefer's.
Hey, I'm Andres Clark, 2159 Clayton, and I just pray that the board, that me and the women of the board do the right thing and just listen to the students and the community because we the ones that voted and y'all through the community voice and concern. But to our superintendent, you are a woman of class, intelligent, bitter, knowing that you've been betrayed by your colleagues. You are a woman of class. Give your word of courage to know Jesus knew he was going to be betrayed. So with that being said, I pray for you and your well-being. And so I see that if we can't get involved, can we please, I'm saying this for my own sake, can we please call Dr. Willie Harrison back in office?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Commissioner Brittany Thornton, 160 North Main in Memphis, Tennessee, 38104. Dr. Fagin, I want to know that was before your appointment, we met and I said to you, as long as you keep the support of the people, you're going to. When I said this, I never thought that the majority of the would hijack these elected the will of the people, the will of our students, leaders, unimportant to our local electives. Though the five voting members of the board may win the fight to terminate your contract tonight, trust me, we will win the war. For as always been and always will be our, our battle to fight. Far more than any accusation made against you, Dr. Fagin, your public persecution has opened our eyes to see our own puppet masters. To every person who has, you have relied on, that has betrayed you, sabotaged you, left you to fend for yourself and cost you your peace, may they all continue to be revealed. Because if they aren't, Dr. Richmond, how will you be successful? Ever since December 17th, Superintendent, I cannot tell you how many individuals have spoke, spoken to me for the same, oh, she's here. We already got her replacement.
Thank you.
Let that sink in.
Thank you. Christopher.
Okay. It's Christmas. So in honor of the chair, I'm asking Ms. Murphy.
Sir, you can't call her, call names. Just say, stand with her.
I'm asking her that she stand with the superintendent and don't go against her because she hasn't been to the principal and been to high school at all. So I'm asking her to stand with the superintendent. Don't go against her at all. Give her a chance. I don't think she wants a change to make. Right in the city. It's not like y'all just want to tear it apart. Why y'all want to tear it apart? Y'all don't want kids to learn how to read, write, spell. They already don't do cursive in school. What, what's going on? Can we get it together? Do the state need to come in?
I told y'all, we was all shocked when we learned they wasn't doing cursive in school no more. They said, fuck it, you little niggas is typing anyway. Y'all texting. You need to know how to write cursive. Crazy. I don't know. Why did it go to this string?
Do y'all want them to? Do y'all want them to come in and audit child? Because they really do need to come in and audit child. And they need to have Miss Fagin right there. That's what they need. Because y'all, don't, don't look at me crazy. Just do the right thing. And I'm asking the chair to do the right thing too. Just do the audit. I want the audit done. Just open the books. Let's open the books and see what's going on. Let's see where the money going.
Thank you.
Let's see. I want to see all the contracts.
Thank you.
They done cut the mic off on the nigga. Y'all ain't shit. They said, nobody else will speak out of turn. You're cutting off after your minutes since Afro Thunder ruined it for everybody.
My name is Farin Johnson, 1490 Lydia Street.
Hey, Karen.
I'm one of over 500 SEAs for this district, one who along with others had an issue with Dr. Fagin. My issue was communication untimely notice of us possibly losing jobs. I didn't care for the fact that she was an outsider and I, like so many, haven't cared for SES and is dealing since Harrington left. But y'all messed up and hired a whole Messiah. She wasn't hired for this job. She was called to this job. She did exactly what y'all said she couldn't do. She fixed the problem and she communicated with us. Thank you and congratulations, Dr. Fagin. They have given you the nation's attention. Locals don't come out for locals, but here we are in the code. Memphis hasn't seen a public lynching since 1939. Now I'm ashamed to say that cat wants to help lead the mob in lynching the best leader our children have seen in decades. Thank you.
Fearon Purnell, Annika Wilt, Damian Curry Morris.
Look at this nigga. He prancing up to the pole, to the podium.
8037 Waterford Place, Memphis, Tennessee, 38125. Good evening. I'm speaking as an alumnus of this district and a proud product of Memphis City Schools. Superintendent, I want to start by saying I thank God for the blessing that you are to this district, to this city and to our students, to the board. I urge you to give this superintendent the time allotted in her existing contract. What we are witnessing here seems oddly strange. A majority of you seem committed to moving forward and terminating the superintendent, showing little interest in collaboration or reconciliation. The concerns and complaints you all have presented predate her tenure and anyone who has done their research will see that. Quite frankly, all of this feels like a peculiar, personal, petty, perplexing, pathetic plot. Galatian 67 reminds us, be not deceived. God is not mocked for whatsoever a man or woman soweth that, shall he or she also reap. So for those of you who want to get rid of the superintendent, you might consider this a victory tonight, but note this, you will reap what you sow. Every action has consequences. What you sow today, you will surely reap tomorrow. Thank you.
Who is this nigga wanting to shake everybody's hand and hug?
My name is Stanika Wilson. I'm at 900 Dickinson, Memphis, Tennessee, 38107. And I just want to say that for elected officials that the community has chosen to represent, given blazing disregard for what the community overwhelmingly says they won't, is truly disheartening. Dr. Fagin's in her few short nine months being here has created revolutionary change that we have not seen from previous or prior leadership. And given less than nine months to give this decision or make this decision like this is irresponsible government. irresponsible governance. So we stand in solidarity as a community against parts of the board who will be on the wrong side of history. Thank you.
Mr. Morris.
Professor Damon Curry Morris, fifteen twenty-nine Dunmore Road, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-one-four. And I just want to say for the record that this is the highest level of corruption I have ever witnessed in all my years of living in Memphis, Tennessee. And I've been through the Tennessee wall, so now you see this kind of corruption. So what I'm trying to sue, because ain't none of this supposed to be going on, but just as lawsuits have been settled, they can be reopened. Okay? Board member, you say you want lawsuit, we'll take it. I give it to you like the Brad Stain. I give it to you. And there's many more. You ain't thinking nothing about the children? This ain't got nothing to do with the children. At all. At all. You got board members threatening folks and all kind of foolishness going on in this community. My own board member threatened me. So I'm trying to tell you, hey, you wanna go to war, let's go to war, because I'm going to war. Okay? It ain't over. It ain't over till the fact Professor Stain is on.
They done cut his mic off.
Latasha Greaves.
Memphis, I see.
Angela Rogers, Cheryl Cright.
She finna start rocking again.
With my utmost respect. I was always taught a heat dog holiday. And every time a camera come on, a dog holler. Every time I turn around, a dog on the camera. Now, I name people according to the way I see them. And there's Honey Bun and then there's Rag 'Em Up. That's how I see them. Because that's how I see them when they on the camera. Every time I see them, they on the camera, they gotta give a statement. But I'm gonna tell you something, for somebody to be a disbar lawyer and they want to give you a lawsuit, I prefer that you include everybody's name, they had your name in their mouth, in their lawsuit. And I want it to be defamation of character and emotional damage.
Good evening. My name is Angela Rogers and I ran, I'm forty-three Naylor Road. I ran for school board commissioner for District Three. I didn't win, and I'm okay with that. I'm not a politician, but I did learn a lot about politics while, when I ran. And so I was asked about whether I would run again if the opportunity presented itself. And honestly, I really don't know.
Whatever, I ran Oprah.
That's why I ran. And so while I don't know much about politics, what I do know, Dr. Fagans, is had I won, you would certainly have my vote to keep doing what you're doing, keep showing up with grace and dignity in spite of everything that is happening around you. And so I do know that. And so I just want to encourage you tonight to keep doing exactly what you're doing. We appreciate you. We thank you for how you show up and how you represent Memphis. You were an amazing choice and I believe that God has sent you.
Good evening again. Cheryl Piggy Cright, eight fifty-six Jackson Avenue, District One. Again, I say, thank you for offering yourself with public service. I do understand that this is a tedious job and I applaud you for stepping up. Again, however, it appears that the work you represent is not reflected of the work that we hired you to do. Your decisions are to be reflected of the public that you serve. If you are not communicating with the public, us, about your decision, then you are making decisions on your behalf. Again, I say, we do realize that some decisions will not be favorable, even though the teeth and tongues will fall out. Let me get this straight. You, the board, said Jarvis Ray kept playing with the staff. You spent money.
Why is it moving like this?
Williams wasn't qualified. You spent money. You, the board, said Dr. Fagans does not get along with others. But you, the board, are still spending enormous amounts of money for a superintendent for our school system, and yet we have a high level of homelessness, food insecurity.
She only been, she has only had the job for eight months. That's not even a full school calendar. This is crazy.
Representative Pearson. Rachel Spree, Danielle Inez.
Representative Justin J. Pearson, forty-seven four-three-one-zero-three.
Afro Thunder back. He gonna be the reason, he the reason they cutting the mics off on niggas now. He back though.
Look.
They clap for this nigga.
Representative Justin J. Pearson, forty-seven four-three-one-zero-three. Look, the problem is, this is an unfair process. It isn't about the decision, just the decision that you're choosing to make, it's how you came to it. Giving somebody twenty-four hours' notice before you show the entire public that you want to fire them is wrong and immoral. And if it hadn't been for just one vote, you would have lost your job in December. And so now people are complaining about the fact that the public has something to say about an unfair process that you all put forward, when in effect, you could do this. You could slow down. You could decide, we may have made a move too soon, as my grandmama used to say. And we need, not only to have grace in this process for the superintendent, but grace in the process for yourselves as newly elected officials and leaders of this community, to put together a proper performance improvement plan and to then hold her accountable at future meetings for the metrics that you set forward. By not doing that, you are continuing to sow distrust in this board and distrust in our community. That's why I stand in support of a fair process for Dr. Fagans. Thank you.
Before you start my time, board members here, Chairman Coleman, I just want to state that people can say Superintendent Fagans or whatever your name is, and you can correct me, commentary, as long as they're not casting a complaint. And so you keep on stopping people from saying people's names when they're not casting a complaint. So I just want to make that clear. Rachel Spree, four-forty North McNeil. Justin, I want to start off by apologizing for you having to experience much of what we've been experiencing for some time. Despite having a majority black board, serving a majority of black students in a majority black city, there is still not much difference happening here than at the state capital. But the people are clear. Our children are not going to the highest bidder. The board can simply not be trusted at this point. We have endorsed, we have endured decades of corruption from the board, but can't give our superintendent more than nine months. You've barely gone through orientation. I realize that there are folks on both sides and their concerns deserve to be considered, but where is the middle? Out of all of the folks that I have spoken to with grievances, no one felt termination was just. How do you hold her accountable and grant the grace that you owe?
Grievances? That ain't no word.
Even a desire. I noticed my tabithes in the back and many others who surrendered our totter are also in cahoots with firing our superintendent. Thank you.
Danielle Inez, one fifty-eight Vance, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-zero-three. Madam Chair, members of the board, tomorrow, the students will walk out. After night's vote to destabilize our district, our principals and teachers will be forced to face your voters during this week's State of the Schools addresses. People from all walks of life will flood your inboxes, will text your phones, and will talk about you like a dog online. And then on Monday, the governor's special session will begin. And let me be clear, we will be in the battle of your political careers. Because people will fight to keep your elected seats, but they will not fight to keep you in them. You are unfavorably rated by voters. You will be the very first thing that your advisors sacrifice. Vouchers, special school districts and school construction money are all up for discussion in less than a week, and y'all are playing politics or chess, but y'all are playing with God's children. What's decided tonight matters. Next is now. This moment is what that phrase means. In closing, don't let anybody think that you can't change your position. You absolutely can change your position up until the very last second. You can always choose to do the right thing. Thank you.
Audrey, Audrey Roel, Noah Nordstrom, Otis Threlkell.
Otis? That's a real nigga name.
Audrey? Noah Nordstrom?
Hey, y'all, I'm Noah Nordstrom, sixty-two twenty Forest Grove Drive, and I'm one of the eighty-eight percent of teachers who support Dr. Fagans. So as teachers in this district, we are expected to do our jobs with excellence. We're expected to be well-prepared, be impartial, and be adaptable to feedback from our bosses. And to ensure this, we are regularly observed by administration. So tonight is y'all's observation. This board is not well-prepared. You keep piling on accusation after accusation that are irrelevant to the resolution to terminate Dr. Fagans. Y'all are pushing Deidre Malone's agenda. Yes, the Deidre Malone who tried to bring an oil pipeline into our community that would have poisoned our water, and you're putting her agenda above the kids of this district, and you're refusing to adapt to the people's input. We are your bosses. So do the right thing and show us tonight that you are worthy of the positions you've been elected to. We have been out here begging for you to listen to us. Listen to the teachers. Eighty-eight percent of teachers support Dr. Fagans. That should say something. Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Otis Threlkell, eighty-two sixty-seven Brightleaf Place, three-eight-zero-one-six. Today, I'm gonna be speaking in support of Dr. Fagans. I think from the beginning, Dr. Fagans has demonstrated a clear commitment to the children, right? So as has been previously mentioned, there's been serious issues with the process. So I won't really get into that. However, today, I want to ask the members of the board to do one thing, and that's do the right thing. We all know the potential effects of making the wrong decision today. As a veteran, I've had the experience of experiencing multiple school systems across the country as well as abroad, right? So the one thing that I've found that these school systems have in common is putting the children first, right? So with that, I want to say again, board, let's do the right thing and put the children first. Thank you.
Did Audrey? Audrey Roel? Philistine Terry? Glenda Hicks? Natria Ren?
Good evening. Hi, I'm Philistine Terry, thirty-one ninety-nine Shider Road, Memphis, Tennessee. The reason I'm here is for the children. I understand as a teacher of thirty-four years, that curriculum drives instruction, instruction drives achievement. Right now, our district needs academic focus. We need to focus on academics. Right now, we have no structure. That's gotta be our first, first thing. Doesn't matter if we keep superintendent or we get a new one. We need to focus on academics, okay? I hear that the learning academies had growth. Right now, our learning academies are defunct. I'm asking you all to please bring those learning academies back. I know that the summer academies are part of the third grade commitment, so therefore, we need to reinforce summer academy with our fall, spring, and winter academies. And our academies have been reduced to a packet, packets for children that can't, suppose you can't read. Our teachers need support. We have new teachers who have just begun.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening. Glenda Hicks, six-oh-eight Gillies.
Look at Mary with pockets.
Community. I'm here this evening, I've never met Dr. Fagans. I don't know her personally. However, I have dear concern at the very base of this board's actions. It concerns me that the concept of team did not exist in these actions that we are facing this evening. If the concept of teams had existed, this entire board would have known about the meeting that was called before minutes of that meeting. So the very basis of your actions, your motives, do not come across as pure. That is a deep concern. In the best interest of actions that teach our children how they need to interact and settle oppositions, this action does not support that. So consider your actions, your motives, and do the right thing for the children.
Natria Ren, ninety-six ninety-five Manor View Co., Cordova, Tennessee, three-eight-zero-one-eight. I stand here in support of Dr. Fagans. I want to talk about time and consequences. You haven't given Dr. Fagans time to do her job. You haven't given Dr. Fagans time to really make a difference. You haven't taken the time to truly prove to your constituents that she has done these alleged infractions. We know that this, we know this because you released the resolution, and then days later, you come back with more alleged infractions. Now, let's talk about consequences. We don't know the consequences of terminating Dr. Fagans. We don't know what type of financial impact that's gonna have. We don't know what type of legislative consequences that we'll face if you terminate Dr. Fagans. And understand that your voters, your votes will have consequences. We will lobby our state legislative body to change the laws, and like I said the last time I was here, we're gonna get each and every one of you out of those seats, and you can stamp that.
Sean McKenzie, Sarah Carpenter, Candy Smith.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean McKenzie, fourteen twenty-five Dexter Lake Drive, Cordova, Tennessee, three-eight-zero-one-six. So I want to come here tonight to address, obviously, the issues that we're having. Dr. Fagans, I want to thank you. You've been incredible. Riverwood Elementary has gotten a new principal since you joined. We've seen a lot of positive change, and I'm getting a lot more information directly from the district than I did last year. As we all know, as parents, that's something that we're very concerned about, communication. So ladies and gentlemen, the board, tonight you have a historic choice to make. Do you decide to maintain progress for Memphis and Shelby County schools, or do you potentially hand over control of the largest school district in Tennessee to the state? That's a decision you need to make here tonight. Thank you.
Sarah Carpenter, twenty-one hundred Curry Avenue, three-eight-one-zero-eight. I wasn't gonna say nothing tonight, but I, y'all, we got state representatives in this room. We got the people that voted for you in this room. We got Shelby County Commission in this room. We got children in this room. Y'all, city council people in this room. We got a former mayor, first black mayor clapping up. We got Doc Holliday in this room. Y'all, y'all, we got people in this room that's telling y'all what we want. Y'all ignoring us, so I keep my ears to the street. Y'all know that, right? I heard there's more allegations gonna come up on Dr. Fagans, but it ain't nothing none of y'all can tell us about Dr. Fagans, because we feel like it's a witch hunt at this point. I see people on Facebook talking about who mentoring them. I'm gonna tell you something, some of your mentors need mentors. Some of the people that y'all putting on Facebook, I hear state representative Simmons up there talking about the people we should have been thrown out of this boardroom when they stood with white people in Nashville, they didn't tell them, throw them out. I'm talking about London Lamont. I'm calling names.
Man, they cut Mama Duck's mic off. Mama Duck, you can't, they can't, we can't hear you. They cut you off. The people in the bed can hear you.
But you still got a chance, Dr. Fagans. Whatever happened tonight.
They cut it back on.
Don't leave the city too quick. Don't leave. I'm asking you not to leave. Don't leave this city, because I promise you, I promise you, I promise you.
Candy Smith. Candy, Candy Smith.
She fired, y'all. It's day three. She ain't got a job.
Candy Smith available?
I wouldn't want to come back after all this shit. We looking the airbag on the board crazy. Fuck y'all.
Hello. I'm Stephanie Sacco. I'm a kindergarten teacher with MSCS, and I'm at seventeen seventy-eight Tutweiler Ave, three-eight-one-zero-seven.
Okay, no, Memphis.
Was thinking to myself, I feel like I haven't gone home from work yet, because I feel this is just as important as what I did today with my students and myself, the teachers with whom I work, the parents and families support Dr. Fagans. She's raised our pay. She's sent surveys to me for the first time anyone has asked me questions about what I think. She subbed at my school for a whole day. The cause that you keep naming is changing all the time. Teachers don't care about Mastery Connect being gone. Sped advisors weren't there because they went back into the classroom where they quit. And central office was turned into something that felt imaginary and foreign to me, into now having someone at my school who's in my PLC every week. I'm waiting for my survey from the board and holding fast in the face of public outcry or even remarking that. I'm waiting for my survey from the board and holding fast in the face of public outcry or even remarking that peaceful protesters need to learn when to shut up. In my kindergarten class, we talked about listening with action, which means you show that you are listening by responding, and no one hears of the five show that they're listening. And it's really sad, but thank you, Dr. Fagans.
Man, she's sleeping bed.
Candy Smith. Our last speaker is Kay Darrell Cowan.
Yeah, little Oompa Loompa speaking.
My name is Candy Smith. I live in 8124 Millilagoon in Bartley, Tennessee.
Bartley? Bartley got his own school system. Y'all not like us.
Shelby County Schools for all of my thirty-five years as a teacher and then counselor. And I just wanted to say that a good politician knows that they need to listen to their constituents. And I don't feel like that's happening here at all. All I hear, yes, I'm retired, but I still have in touch with many of my colleagues. And all I'm hearing from them is they're hopeful, they're encouraged, they feel like things are finally gonna change for the better after many, many years of the same old thing that we've had all these years. I think part of the problem is some of the politicians on the board have been there long enough that where maybe they owe some favors to some people, and now they're trying to push those favors through. And I don't think the community is gonna stand for that. And so I hope that you will use good common sense, listen to your constituency, and keep Dr. Fagans here. Thank you.
She stamped it.
Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, and our lessors board members, my name is Kay Darrell Cowan, address is 3385 Airways Boulevard, 38116. But I want to say this, I want to say this. When, when the community interviewed Dr. Fagans, I did ask her three questions. The question that I had for Dr. Fagans, first of all, are you a gangbanger? In other words, does your sorority or fraternity take precedence over the children? Her answer was no. I asked Dr. Fagans, I said, are you willing to shake up some things in central office that need to be changed since I was a student in MSCS? She said yes. I said, Dr. Fagans, in doing so, understanding it's gonna make a lot of people upset, are you willing to still take on their charge? She said yes. So I stand here to say this today, on the day that after we celebrate Dr. King's birthday in Memphis, Tennessee. My final statement is this, that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. So it's time for us to, let's give us some grace and make an opportunity to make this right. When we're talking about comfort resolution, our children are paying attention to how we're responding. I'm not saying that nobody's perfect, but what I'm saying is there is a way that we can work together. And let's find a way to make that happen tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay, big bro. Y'all out of order. Power to roll. Y'all is out of order.
We have three items to address under request for action this evening. The first one is six point one, outside general counsel report, outside counsel.
They on Memphis, they on Curry. They checking the shit out this land.
Pull your mic up a little bit.
Damn, his ass.
My law firm was engaged to perform an essential function, and that function was to ascertain the facts. The facts. Because there was, in this community, a disbelief of the facts. And that is what we endeavored to do with respect to the termination resolution. Was it based on fact? People are entitled to their own opinions, but they're not entitled to their own set of facts. And so that's what we did. Earlier today.
He sound rea-zesty to me.
I just, I thought we were visiting with facts and not editorializing by the board attorney, so I just want to state that for the record.
He's getting to his point.
There was a lot of preamble there.
He's getting to his point.
Okay, go Dr. Fagans. Dr. Fagans said, hold the fuck up, nigga.
Keep going.
She said, hold up, nigga.
Earlier, earlier to today, I presented to the board of commissioner, the facts. And, and the question that should, that is most important.
Y'all, please be respectful and allow him the opportunity to speak. Or the SROs, we can start clearing the room.
Do the facts reveal? What do the facts reveal? With respect to the three items set forth in the resolution, the facts irrefutably reveal that they are all true. They are all true. It is a fact that Dr. Fagans misled the board with respect to the allegation that employees of this district misuse overtime to the tune of $1 million. That is not true. And there are no facts.
Point of order, let him speak.
Do not.
The executive summary would be read into the record. This is editorializing, and the tone of your voice is, this is a, as if it's a trial. I'm embarrassed.
Ain't nobody no slave. We ain't no slave in here now. He has his own tone.
Superintendent, excuse me, you, you may finish speaking. Colleagues, we will not, we will not, we will not get out of order.
It's too late for that. It's about to go down in that motherfucker.
Board Chair, point of personal privilege, could we take a brief recess to reset, please?
No, he can go on. We're gonna keep going. People are going to be respectful. We always want to talk about what the children, it's time for us to do the adult thing. Listen. We can clear the room. We can clear, we can clear the, we can do, we can take the vote now and be done with it. Y'all wanna do the vote?
It is, it is.
Hold on one second.
It is.
Clear the room. We just gonna clear the space, and we, we'll finish. That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. We, we can clear it out.
Madam Chair, it is also a fact that in the responses that Dr. Fagans provided to this board on January 6th and January 14th, that they were untruthful with respect to the allegation she made that impugned the character and the integrity of employees of this district. It is also a fact, it is also a fact that Dr. Fagans accepted the $45,000 donation without board approval. It is a fact.
But she told him about it.
Is established by her own email dated July 21, 2024. It is further a fact that when Dr. Fagans was asked this question by this board, that she was untruthful. That is a fact. It is also a fact that when Dr. Fagans responded to this allegation in her letter of January 6th and January 14th, that she was again untruthful. Those are facts. It is a fact that Dr. Fagans failed to encumber.
So what's that?
A federal grant for over $300,000. That is a fact. It is also a fact.
Get her out, please. We not gonna have this.
He is dusty.
Chair, chair, chair. This is a public meeting, chair. And what is happening here is this is our.
Point of order.
Board hired attorney is acting like.
Michelle, you out of water.
You know what?
You out of water.
It's not for you to say.
Michelle, you out of water.
Chair, I'm talking to the chair, not the board member who's been here three months. Chair, this is not a courtroom, and the board hired attorney is acting as if he is in a courtroom. He was, he was instructed to read the executive summary.
Preach.
He was instructed to read the executive summary.
Michelle.
He's nasty.
Thank you.
When you left out, he's doing what else, the other part of what he was instructed to do.
He being dusty.
I'm not gonna sit here and argue back and forth and scream with anybody.
Highly inappropriate.
This whole process, a lot of this is highly inappropriate. A lot of things have been highly inappropriate.
Okay. Oh, shit.
Chair, point of personal privilege, once again, may I respectfully ask that we call a recess?
We can call a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
They had an order. She done lost control. They done cut her mic. Niggas yelling, "Don't put your hands on me." You part of the problem.
Hold on, we taking a five-minute recess to get it, get it regrouped. Hold on, fun.
She just hoping it don't turn ugly. She like, shit, these niggas is agitated. I like the board members arguing with each other. She like, hold up, you just got her a little moment. Shut the fuck up, talk to me. She don't know what to do. She, she defeated. She like, I just want to moderate. Notice the heavy set of police presence in this motherfucker. They know what's up. They got sheriffs and resource officers from the schools, all police. They hear about India thing, oh, I don't know what they doing in Dallas and in Thornton Town. That's it. She can't threaten you, Michelle.
We gonna, we gonna end this.
We gonna end it. She on Curry.
If, we're asking, if you're gonna, please have a seat. Have a seat, please.
Can't take niggas nowhere. Man, when Kefi D. get out?
Attorney Spence, you may continue.
I'd like to move to adjourn the meeting.
Attorney Spence, you may continue.
She want to end this shit.
Based on our review of the facts, we established that with respect to the three allegations that appear in the termination resolution, that Dr. Fagans violated her employment contract no less than eight times and deviated from board policy on at least nine separate occasions.
She don't been there eight months. She ain't know.
Concluded that with respect to Dr. Fagans candor and truthfulness, it was absent. Dr. Fagans, in responding to the allegations in the termination resolution, exhibited a pattern of untruthful statements.
Who cares?
Those are our findings, and those findings appear in this report which we provided to the board. And I'm available for questions.
Where's our parliamentarian? Chair, Dr. Schultz, I moved to adjourn this meeting. What is the status of that?
It didn't get good. I ain't mean to keep y'all here this long.
Chair, Dr. Schultz, I will suspend that. I wanted to end this, but it is now that you have ended his report. I, I recall my suspension of the meeting.
Damn, damn. It's like that. You walk past the nigga, you lying. Pussy, nigga.
Commissioner McKinnon, Commissioner McKissick, Commissioner Hewitt Garcia, if, please, you all, cameras gonna have to move over so people that'll sit, can see, please don't stand in front of people. If you're standing, please have a seat.
Point of order, where are we on, which one?
We'll wait. If you have questions for counsel, that's where we are. If you have a question for the counsel at this point, you turn your light off, Commissioner McKinnon. Okay, Commissioner McKissick.
No question for the counsel. I'm just waiting to comment.
Thank you. Now, any board member that has a comment or a question, well, a comment, no questions.
Can I speak now, Chair? That's what my light was on for.
Michelle ready to go off.
Yes, I'd like to speak on the report.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you. And just officially for the record, just want to share what I think of this report.
Ooh, trash it.
This report was handed to the board, or at least to some members of the board, just barely an hour before our meetings began. A report that's the, as thick as a phone book, for those who remember that. And there's no way for me to review all of that copy in that time, but what I can tell you of those policy violations, whatever rules or that supposedly were broken, nine policies, I believe, was mentioned, there are two hundred policies. So nine out of two hundred is what we're talking about here.
In an eight-month span, and she brand new.
Other allegations brought forth, we keep talking about a $45,000 check, $45,000 out of 1.8 billion. And it's not like it was deposited into her personal account. Just as there was an error earlier this evening regarding enrollment numbers, a clerical error, that's what we're talking about here. So the violations, and, and we keep talking about like the board, the board, the board. No, it is not the entire board. The communication has been wide open for as much as I can recall. I'm addressing the points that were brought up throughout this so-called report. Board members across the state are looking at this. We are grasping at straws here. No one is infallible. You've heard the community speak about, no one expects the superintendent to be perfect. Nobody is perfect. This board in and of itself may very well have violated policies and state laws, namely the sunshine law. Also, in terms of violating policies, there are some members of this board who've come in and haven't even had their new board member orientation mandated by the state. That happens next week.
Up to three months, the, the three-month lady.
The board and make allegations, and you yourself don't have all the aptitude to really do the job, no matter how much expertise you may think you bring. There is much to always learn that only time can give, but certainly, bare minimum, the board member orientation. There is much to always learn that only time can give, but certainly, bare minimum, the board member orientation. This community has been through emotional trauma over the last, last month plus. I will continue my comments, please give me a warning when I have my remaining time, Dr. Schultz. Thank you.
Damn, they ringing cowbells and shit?
Commissioner Murphy?
I moved to the previous question.
Commissioner McKenna?
I would like to suggest that the board, I'd like to make a motion to make this a transparent report and to post it so that the community can see the full report. I'd like to move that we post the full report.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, robot, roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Commissioner McKissick? Alright, so you can see that it's a sham. Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Porter?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Love?
Aye.
Commissioner McKenna?
Aye.
Commissioner Otte?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner, Board Chair Coleman?
Aye.
You have nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, that motion passes. This will become a public document. Give us a couple of days to get all of this scanned in, and it will be online.
What more they said we want tonight? Motherfucker, you gonna scan this shit in? But technically, it shouldn't have to be scanned in, cuz I'm sure that nigga emailed, it was typed, so it's emailable. It ain't got to be scanned in page for page, I just thought about that. The original shit is typed and saved on a computer where they could just email it.
Yes, I have one more comment. Chair.
She said, I wasn't through.
Commissioner McKenna, McKissick, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Regarding this report and uploading it and letting the public see it within the next few days, that is emblematic of this entire process. It has been completely off. It will be a moot point in a few days if a vote's taken tonight, so I just wanna say that for the record. This report, it was supposed to be delivered in a neutral manner, just simply stating the facts without all the Perry Mason editorializing. And it's clear
Not Perry Mason.
In the private meeting, that some board members had access to this information prior. By the way, the questions were being asked, that was my observation, in some form or fashion. So that's just wanna say that for, regarding this report that
See a little spook.
I believe the superintendent was told that her attorney could not be present to respond. So, thank you to the public for coming out to hear about the report. You can go online in a few days and read it, but we're gonna move forward with this meeting tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Hewitt Garcia?
Thank you for Board Member McKissick articulating what I meant by my sign. What we expected was reading even the executive summary, and I've been, you know, I think of as counsel in general, any counsel, to be fairly a presenting fact. There was a clear point of view. I, I feel embarrassed. I feel embarrassed to sit up here. Board members, this is not a trial. What I, the substitute amendment I plan to introduce on the next item on the agenda is really, do you still wanna work with Dr. Fagin's? And the question is, if you're incapable of making progress with adults, why should we trust you to make decisions for the progress of our kids? I, you will have to live with and accept the consequences of the decision tonight. The public is watching, they made that very clear. But this is, I have additional remarks I wanna share before I introduce my resolution. But I can tell there is one colleague up here who knows better. I, I can see the stress, I see the faith that she is weighing. And I've got your back if you wanna be on the right side of history. That's all.
Okay, 6.2, resolution terminating employment contract. She, she's getting ready to do her, yeah, the motion is now. The Commissioner Hewitt Garcia, I'm sorry.
Point of information, or order. Is it already on the floor? Is the motion for the resolution terminating employment contract already on the floor? It is, it's on the floor, so it's been. Uh huh. Okay, call for the question. I can't.
Commissioner Hewitt Garcia?
Uh, Board Member McKissick would like to make a comment, and then I will go. Okay, okay. I move to amend by substitution with the following language, which you all have copies in front of you titled, substitute amendment to resolution terminating employment contract. But before that, I wanna address the public directly. Thank you for showing up and taking a stand. I remain steadfast in my position tonight, like the night of December 17th. I believe there are five colleagues who initially set out to terminate Dr. Fagin's that may still do, do so tonight. Still, I will not surrender my optimism or hope. Your vote is your position tonight, but I also wanna share something deeply concerning. I have knowledge of a drafted bill that while primarily intended for Memphis Shelby County Schools, could have significant statewide implications on school boards. And let me be clear, I believe Nashville is using this as an opportunity, not an excuse. I know what happens in Nashville is not a direct consequence of whatever happens tonight, but it will inform the severity of their response. I don't and none of us should favor diluting this elected board with individuals not chosen by our constituents or allow them to gain control of our facilities and beyond. We've seen state intervention before in the Achievement School District, and we know the results. It has not benefited our students or families, nor improved educational outcomes. Yet even as we understand this history, I take no solace in any future ability to say, "I told you so," or "Look what happened." There's no world where I am successful as a board member and my colleagues fail because we all bear the repercussions of the decisions that we make tonight, and our kids do too. I'm urging you to take a different path tonight. I'm asking you to sort my version of this resolution. Together, let's do the hard work required to ensure stability of our district, and let's give Dr. Fagin's more time. And let's demonstrate to our community and beyond that we are willing to defend our autonomy. This is our chance to act decisively in favors, in favors of what is best for our students and what our teachers want, and for Memphis Shelby County Schools. I will read my resolution. Is it okay? Okay. Substitute amendment to resolution terminating employment contract. Whereas, the board considered the resolution terminating employment contract at the special call meeting on December, December 17th, 2024. This resolution serves as a blanket substitute amendment to be referred to as resolution to retain Superintendent Dr. Marie Fagin's. And whereas Superintendent Dr. Marie Fagin's has served Memphis Shelby County Schools for the past eight months, garnering and maintaining overwhelming community support since the 18th month search process, and during a time of continued challenges and transformation for the 110,000-plus students seeking an education for success in learning, leadership, and life. And whereas Dr. Fagin's has made difficult decisions set in motion before her arrival in April 2024 to restructure the district's administrative offices, reallocating resources to prioritize students in classrooms while ensuring fiscal responsibility, efficiency, and continued use and strengthening of data on MSES's three priorities. Strengthening literacy, recruiting and retaining the best talent, and creating rigorous, equitable academic choices to ensure students are prepared for the global workforce. And whereas both this board and superintendent have professional standards for their roles through professional organizations and an internal MSES policy, which should guide the board and superintendent on a critical analysis of the need of professional development and continuous improvement that is done together and separately, including, one, TCA 492203A15A requires the board to conduct performance evaluations for superintendents fairly, transparently, and with evidence-based criteria, ensuring decisions are rooted in accountability and the best interest of students and the community. Two, the School Superintendents Association names 12 standards of the educational leader, including maintains the standards and seeks to improve the effectiveness of the profession through research and continuing professional development. Three, Memphis Shelby County Schools Policy 1013 Superintendent Code of Ethics states, "I will endeavor to fairly represent the entire educational community under the auspices of Shelby County Schools at all times." Four, the Tennessee School Board Association's Board Member Code of Conduct includes but is not limited to relations with the Director of Schools or Superintendent, which states, "I will hold the Director of Schools or Superintendent accountable for working with staff and requiring them to work within the framework of policy set up by the board." Five, the Center for Public Education's eight characteristics of an effective school board includes, effective school boards are accountability-driven, spending less time on operational issues and more time on policies to improve student achievement. Six, Memphis Shelby County Schools Policy 0004 Board Officers and Duties describes the statutory and additional duties of the Chair, including, one, confer with the superintendent on crucial matters, which may occur between board meetings and subsequently inform the board. And two, bring before the board such matters that may require the intention of the board. Whereas, the board has the opportunity to demonstrate strong governance and communicate the desired improvements to Superintendent Dr. Marie Fagin's so that she may have additional time to remedy the root issues outlined in the prior resolution calling for termination. Upon the examination of the resolution and the public comments, it's proposed the following topics be addressed, outlined, and their progress reported on. One, stronger internal controls. Dr. Fagin's must continue to use the Tennessee Comptroller Internal Control and Compliance Manual and School Support Organizations Procedures Manual to audit, improve, and strengthen all Memphis Shelby County Schools' internal controls, including but not limited to enhanced staff training, adhering to the grant management process, including deadlines and RFPs, evaluating employees who work excessive overtime to address workload pressure, and implementing robust donation acceptance processes and controls. The superintendent must continue to address the areas outlined in the prior termination resolution, bring additional recommendations for areas of focus, and outline the necessary additional resources, if any, to the board, such as the need for any additional headcount. Two, communication improvement. As stated in Dr. Fagin's contract, the board and superintendent must establish and follow a communication protocol. Three, human capital analysis. Dr. Fagin will continue to, the analysis of MSES's human capital needs using the district's priorities to ultimately increase student achievement. This includes completing a compensation analysis and a review of the credentials and skills of those executing the work against the evolving changes of the district. Four, board governance training. The board must complete all required training described in the State Board of Education Rules and Regulations and engage with a reputable third-party organization such as the Tennessee School Board Association for an assessment of needs, and must engage in additional ongoing professional development topics such as governance, policy, budgeting, or other key leadership needs. Whereas, the Memphis Shelby County School Board will examine the performance of Dr. Fagin's, raising any concerns for public discussion, encouraging the collective ownership of our path forward. And whereas, the Memphis Shelby County School Board supports additional time for Superintendent Dr. Fagin's to lead MSES in addressing the district's needs and achieving academic progress for our students and schools. Be it therefore resolved that the Memphis Shelby County School Board and the public will receive monthly updates on the progress of the improvements outlined in this resolution during the superintendent's report, starting no later than the February 2025 Board Business Meeting. Be it therefore resolved that the Superintendent Dr. Marie Fagin will present any budget considerations for initial resources needed to implement the improvements, if any named in this resolution at the Board Budget Retreat on February 21st, 2025, with the complete list of needs for consideration by the end of the fiscal year on June 30th, 2025. Be it therefore resolved that the Memphis Shelby County School Board Chair will present monthly updates on the progress of the improvements outlined in this resolution during the Chair's Report, starting no later than February 2025 Board Business Meeting. Be it therefore resolved that the Memphis Shelby County School Board Chair must share the board plan for continued professional development with the public before their scheduled 2025, 2026 school year budget presentation to the Shelby County Board of Commissioners. Be it therefore resolved that the Chair of the Memphis Shelby County School Board should present any budget considerations for initial resources needed to implement the improvements, if any, named in this resolution at the board retreat, the board budget retreat on February 21st, 2025, with the complete list of needs for consideration by the end of the fiscal year on June 30th, 2025. Be it therefore resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be transmitted to the Tennessee Department of Education and the public to affirm the board's support of additional time for Superintendent Dr. Marie Fagin's and its commitment to stability and progress in the district. January 21st, 2025, Amber Hewitt Garcia.
May I have a second for the motion to amend?
I'd like to second that, please.
Okay. We're now wearing the hands of Dr. Schultz.
Handling a resolution and a substitute to a resolution is a little complicated. So, without objection, I'm gonna try and lead you through this thing. Madam Chairman, if at any time you want it back, you just take it. Resolutions are divided into two parts. There is a preamble and there is a resolution. The preamble is all the whereas statements. They don't have a great deal of significance. The meat of a resolution is in the resolving statements. The way this process works in the amending is we try to perfect the two documents. Perfecting means to amend them in some way to bring them together. You have two items before you. They are quite different. What I will do is I will open up the original one first, and I'm only working on the resolve section, not the preamble section. Go to the resolve section, and the question now is, would you like to make any amendments? Now that you see what the two are, would you like to make any amendments in perfecting the original one? And the amendments would be to clarify better language. It would be to adjust the language to get more votes, to get it closer to the substitute. And I'm gonna open the floor now for anyone who would like to make amendments to the original language.
Point of order to the original language of the original motion for termination or this particular motion that's on the floor.
What's up right now is perfecting the resolution terminating employment contract, your original one.
Dr. Schultz, if I may, so does this substitute amendment, which took into consideration the original resolution, does this not count as the tightening up of the language?
What's going on here is if you want to change anything in the original resolution, this is your moment. Next, I will go to the amendment, which is referred to as substitute amendment to resolution terminating employment contract, and I will allow you to make any amendments to that. If you do make amendments to it, then I will open both of them up when you're done making any amendments, and you don't have to make any amendments. I'll open them both up if there's anything in the wherashes that you want to do. Because if you change something in the, in the, the resolve part, it might impact something above it. Somehow, I doubt that's going to happen, but this is the process, and we'll just walk through the process. Right now, what is available to you is the resolution terminating employment contract. Would anyone like to move perfecting language for that document? Since no one is, we will now move to the substitute amendment. Would anyone like to amend the substitute amendment? Any language in that? It appears not. Both documents are open if you would like to amend any of the other sections, the whereas sections. It appears not. Now, we're at the point of deciding which one you want. You're going to vote as to which one you want as your main motion. Currently, the main motion is the resolution terminating employment contract. You have an amendment suggested, which is your substitute amendment. The question is, do you wish to amend by substitution? Vote yes if you would like the substitute amendment to become the main motion. Vote no if you would like the original resolution terminating employment contract to remain as the main motion. Are there any questions?
There's always questions, Dr. Schultz. If you could clarify by that, and is there any opportunity to make comments regarding it? Yon, just change.
What's before you right now, since no one wanted to modify any of the language? What's before you right now is a substitute amendment. If you would like to speak to the substitute amendment, this is your moment for debate.
Thank you, Dr. Schultz, for the clarification. Board Chair, to my colleagues, first, I want to, according to the temperature, we're going to this very occult situation. I'm, again, going to go back to the center of where I know that we all care for children. We all care for this community. I ask that we listen to our community. They have spoken so clearly, so eloquently tonight. I can't do any more than what they have already done, but I just want to point out that if this is for the children, what are we telling our children? That no, we can't come to some resolution? No, we don't know how to settle our conflicts? No, we don't know how to get along? That's not the message we wanna send to our children. I wanna co-sign onto this substitute amendment resolution because it is fair and balanced. It acknowledges the fact that perhaps you don't have the same level of communication interaction with the superintendent. I want to work with you to ensure that that does happen. We can hit the reset button on all of this. We absolutely can do this together. We don't have to throw the baby out with the bathwater. So please, consider that.
So please, consider that. And whereas I have tried to be conciliatory to say, I, I understand that you've got concerns that perhaps I don't share, I just haven't heard the reverse. I've heard no one say, well, you know what, let me reconsider that. Well, maybe, maybe there's something got off, maybe it's because he missed part of the superintendent, that's why he has a, let me take a look at that. My been, warping my chair, we're at the house during all this bumps, bruises, and... Please, let's honor that work. It just doesn't make sense. We have new teachers who are given more latitude than we're giving the superintendent. New teachers have three years where they can figure things out. It's not too much to say, let's listen to our community. They are begging us just to listen to them. We don't always get everything right. Clearly, yes, there's something that needs to be improved, but we can do this together. I wrote an open letter to you where I said, quoting Dr. King, "To have a tough mind and a tender heart, it takes both of those to lead." Yes, we've had some tough, tough issues here, but find that tender heart to listen to the community, to listen to children. It is overwhelming. They don't want this. They want us to work together to move beyond this. Thank you.
Commissioner McKinnney.
Call for the question.
Commissioner.
That requires a second.
Second.
This is moving the previous question, which would close debate, stop amendment process, and vote immediately on which document you want. Again, if you vote yes, you are voting to substitute. Oh, excuse me, we haven't done this yet. This takes a two-thirds vote of those present in voting in order to stop debate.
Roll call, roll call vote to stop the debate.
Vote yes to stop debate, debate, and vote immediately on whether, on the substitution. Vote no if you don't wish to do that, but it will take two-thirds in the affirmative to stop debate and vote immediately. Voting yes closes debate, and we would vote immediately on whether to substitute.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McKissick?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Board Chair Coleman, you have none in the affirmative.
The motion passes.
The question is now on the motion to substitute. Vote yes if you want the substitute amendment to become the main motion. Vote no if you would like the resolution terminating employment to remain as the main motion. Vote yes, this is, the, the question before you is on the amendment. The motion is to amend by substitution. Vote yes if you would like the substitute amendment to become the main motion. Vote no if you would like to retain resolution terminating employment contract to remain as the main motion. Everybody okay? This will take five votes to be, yes, five votes to be adopted. I will remind the members how to vote on a, on this kind of thing. You have four things that you can say. You can say yes, or something like that, yay, or whatever. You can say no or nay. You can pass if you're not ready to vote, but you would like to have the secretary come around again and ask you again. You can also vote present, which means that you are not voting at this time, but you would like to be marked as present during the vote.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner McKissick?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
No.
Commissioner Love?
No.
Commissioner McKinney?
No.
Commissioner Otte?
Pass.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Otte?
No.
Board Chair Coleman?
No.
You have three in the affirmative, and you have six in the nay.
The motion is lost.
What is before you now is the resolution terminating the employment contract.
Commissioner McKinney?
It is open for debate.
Call for the question.
That's moving the previous question again. It will require a second and a two-thirds vote to stop debate and vote immediately.
Chair.
I said.
This is not debatable. Go ahead and roll call. Again, it will take a two-thirds.
Chair.
They said call the roll.
Clarify why we are closing the debate at this point, because we have not heard from the nays, and I'm really, I, I think the public would want to hear, I want to hear from, from the perspective we haven't heard.
From the parliamentary perspective, the member was recognized, and she has the right to make that motion. I cannot tell you what her thoughts were on that, but it is legal for her to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Schultz.
Vote yes if you want to close debate and vote immediately. Vote no if you would like more debate on this issue.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McKissick?
No.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Porter?
No.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Board Chair Coleman?
Yes.
You have six in the affirmative and three nays.
The motion.
Yeah, there being three in the negative and six in the affirmative, it does reach the two-thirds threshold, and debate is closed, and you will be voting immediately on the resolution terminating the employment contract. Voting yes on this means you are in support of the resolution terminating the employment contract. Voting no, you are opposed to it. It will take five affirmative votes to adopt.
Point of privilege, as the resolution chairperson, I would like to vote first, please. Can I do that?
Board Chair Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKissick?
No.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Porter?
No.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Pass.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes. No, I'm sorry.
This meeting is a...
Okay. Commissioner Otte, would you repeat your vote?
Yes.
I have three nays.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. This meeting is a...
They almost at the end, man. Just 12 more minutes. Let's see what they come back and say.
Now, I am proud to announce that our very own Dr. Willie Harrington has agreed to help us, help this board, so I just want to take this time to say thank you, Dr. Harrington, for your support. Thank you for being willing to work with us. Now we're on to the naming of...
Excuse me, point of order, Chair. With all due respect, I'm a huge admirer of Dr. Harrington, but you cannot make a unilateral decision like that without including the entire board. Am I hearing this for the first time? This is unacceptable. There should be other names and other parties that can be a part of this. I love Dr. Harrington for what he did for the school district. He was my superintendent. I respect him to the utmost, but you can't announce that.
First of all, Michelle, don't holler at me, please. I'm, I'm not being disrespectful to you.
I'm not hollering. I'm speaking, I'm speaking very forcefully, but I'm not hollering.
Because...
But also, I would like you to respect, we talk about policies and procedures and how things should be done, proper protocol. You cannot announce that Dr. Harrington is going to be the one to shepherd this process. I'd love to make him a part of it.
I didn't say he was going to shepherd the process. I said he's going to work with us. We're on to the naming, we, we will discuss that. We are now on to the naming of interim superintendent. May I have nominations, if anybody has a nomination?
I would like to nominate Rod Richmond.
Second.
The name of Rod, Dr. Rodrick Richmond has been brought to the forefront.
You take all nominations first.
Yes. Board Member Hewitt Garcia, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Angela Whitelaw. I'd like to second that nomination of Dr. Angela Whitelaw as our interim superintendent. And I'd like to hear from both of them.
Are there any other nominations? Commissioner McKinney?
Yeah, it's point of order. I'm not sure, that's highly unusual, but I'm not sure that we have that in the process or policies to hear from either one of them. This is a board decision.
So we're asking Mr. Rod Richmond and Angela Whitelaw, do you accept?
Thanks for the consideration.
Board Member Coleman, if you'll just give me a few seconds. I do want to thank Board Member Garcia and Board Member McKissick today, because I'm filled with gratitude and honor for your recognition.
Hold on, Dr. Whitelaw. Security, clear them out, please.
Oh, shit.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Coleman, Chair Coleman. First of all, let me say that, let me thank Board Member Garcia and Board Member McKissick. I'm here today with gratitude and honor for your recognition of my work across the district for the last three years, moving the district to a level five. But for right now, as we lead into this next phase, to be considered for this role is an honor, and I sincerely appreciate your confidence in my abilities and where I stand. While I am pleased to have been recognized tonight, I also recognize this is not a time for division. We cannot, as a district, we cannot, as a community, so therefore I've made this difficult decision. While I, my goal is to be superintendent, my decision tonight is to withdraw my name from consideration because I am prepared to align with and support the individual board who ultimately selects to lead our district. I remain committed to the success of Memphis Shelby County Schools, and will continue to dedicate my efforts to serving our students and the commi, and the community. So I will follow and serve, but thank you.
Look at Jesse with the long hair.
Dr. Rodrick Richmond is the interim superintendent of Memphis Shelby County Schools, and no other nominations. Roll call vote, please.
It will require five votes to approve.
Commissioner McKissick?
Present, not voting.
Commissioner Garcia?
Present, not voting.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Board Chair Coleman?
Yes.
You have seven in the affirmative, and you have two present, not voting.
Thank you. The motion passes. Dr. Rodrick, Rodrick Richmond is our interim superintendent. Congratulations.
That was it, ladies and gentlemen. That's all I got for you coming from Memphis. We hadn't had any updates. I don't know if she's sore or whatever. If I find out, I'll let y'all know something. To the next episode, we out. What it do, man? Just now looking back in the chat and seeing what it do. To the next episode, we out.
Never been a hoe, I stay on goon, so what the business? Nigga talking reckless, shoot his bitch ass with the quickness. Name bleeding, sorry, beggar, asking for forgiveness. Bow, 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 limp biscuit. All my niggas wildin', they done labeled us a misfit. Wake up every morning, two or three, five in the thick bit. Oh, shit, get nobody come to see ya, oh, there's some focus. Shoot a hundred shots, no reloading. Master of the game, you would think I'm mentally coded. Memphis niggas spitting, spitting, macking like I'm golden. Ho, where my money, you gon' turn me to the old me. Say hi, first-class flight, I'm in the nobly. Copy, cooking, whipping, shit, fatigue, I'm the proceed. OG, I been moving pack niggas since '03. Low-key, niggas hating, but they don't want no beef. Stay gang, true sippers, bitch, I bet we don't eat. Get jam, get a lawyer, make it, but it don't speak. Pour a four, I need some more, nigga, had a long week. Shout out to my plug, he show we love each other, long beat, I'm too geek. Walked in by myself, I left with two freaks, fool we. Nothing in they mouth and on they booty. Austin power swag, yeah, baby, this is groovy. You can call me money boy, or you can call me nude it. Good niggas search his chicken, let me get a two-piece. Top-down two-seater, let me feel the two-breath. Got a holdy steady chopper, kick it back like Bruce Lee. Lately, I been in the zone, I guess I'm in my two-three. Don't call my phone for nothing less than a QP. Feeling like the Migos, 'cause my bitches bad and bougie. All my haters love me, all these bitches just a groupish. Came a long way, I like to introduce the new me. Standing on dinner like I'm king, or like I'm Drew Skin. Call me run, I ain't it, 'cause I like my lover Tuesday. When we licking some movie, she busted like a Uzi. I love the way she do me. I beat it up like Uzi. She dancing just like Sukie. Call me run, I ain't it, 'cause I love my lover Tuesday. When we licking some movie, she busted like a Uzi. I love the way she do me. I beat it up like Uzi. She dancing just like Sukie. I never been a hoe, I stay on goon, so what the business? Nigga talking reckless, shoot his bitch ass with the quickness. Name bleeding, sorry, beggar, asking for forgiveness. Bow, 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 limp biscuit. Never been a hoe, I stay on goon, so what the business? Nigga talking reckless, shoot his bitch ass with the quickness. Name bleeding, sorry, beggar, asking for forgiveness. Bow, 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 limp biscuit.